Father God, we just come to you in the precious name of Jesus, Lord. We just lift up the city and all that they're doing that we would have wisdom from you. We'd come together, the team, just to make this place better for each department, for the residents, and for the businesses, and all the stuff that's on the agenda tonight, like adopting a street. That's a good program that people could volunteer to help in, so I thank you for that as well. And temporary wave of fire inspection fees, that's good to help the city to show that we, not just to try to take from them, but also pour back into them. And then I want to thank you also for the maintaining point of the Newport Ritchie service to work together with them in areas and the piggyback contracts and the things that's going to be on the old agenda. So I just, I give you glory and honor and praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Matt Clerk, I have a role, please.
Mayor John Eric Hoover.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chris Mayer.
Here.
Councilman David Mueller.
Here.
Councilman Robert Hubbard.
Here.
Councilwoman Lisa Burke.
Here.
City Attorney Nancy Meyer.
Here.
City Manager Matthew Koppeler.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, first up, we have proclamations tonight. They were not on the agenda, so I need a motion to add. There's two proclamations for tonight, Municipal Clerks Week, which is the week past, and then Police Week, which is our current week we're in. If I get a motion to add those to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can put a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So that, if I could have Ashley come forward.
Do you want the mic, clerk? Okay. First up, proclamation Municipal Clerks Week, May 4th through the 10th, 2025, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and the community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk, participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore, I, John Eric Hoover, Mayor of the City of Port Ritchie, do recognize the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Municipal Clerks Week, and I further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Ashley McDonough, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Dated this 13th day of May, 2025, John Eric Hoover, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, I have a proclamation for Police Week. If I could have all the officers in chief come up for you.
Thank you all for coming.
Actually, if you want, chief.
You can come down here.
Okay.
So to record this proclamation is to recognize National Police Week 2025 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Port Ritchie Police Department, whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made this ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty, whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Visual on the evening of May 13th, 2025, whereas the Candlelight Visual is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through the 17th, whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, John Eric Hoover, Mayor of the City of Port Ritchie, do recognize the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the City of Port Ritchie, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to seal the City of Port Ritchie to be fixed this 13th day of May, 2025, John Eric Hoover, Mayor. Thank you all so very much for your service.
Let's do that next meeting before you leave.
Okay. Well, how do we do that?
You'll be the victor.
Right before the jump, you take.
For the public humor, our city manager thought we were having a taser demonstration tonight. I said, "We'll wait till next week before he leaves." Okay. Next up, we have three sets of council minutes for approval, for motion for the January 28th, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can put a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the April 10th, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second, any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can put a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And last up, I need a motion for April 22nd, 2025, swearing meeting minutes.
Change the make to that, please.
Okay.
Page 21 at the top, continuation of page 20, election of Vice Mayor. I was put on there as saying yea. I did not make the, I did not make the, I'm sorry about that, Ashley, you didn't hear me.
Okay. Yeah, so you get that change? Okay. And then if I get a motion for the approval with that change?
Second.
No, I need a motion.
Make a movement.
Okay.
I make a second.
Okay. Motion, second, any further discussion? Any public comments? See if you can put a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is comments from the general public. I do have a few signed up. First is Hunter Dawson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. 5621 Egress, please. First, I would like to thank God in Jesus' name for the honor to speak in front of you, all of you. I want to thank Matthew Koppeler for doing a great job as the city manager for the City of Port Ritchie. Then I'd like to introduce myself to the public. My name is Hunter Dawson. It's okay. Thank you, appreciate it. At age 34, I have a wonderful wife, Karen, two sons, Liam, three and a half, and Levi, 10 months old. My education background is a Juris Doctorate from Liberty University School of Law, and that's in Lynchburg, Virginia. With that degree, it shows a high proficiency of analyzing, reasoning, speaking, reading, and writing at a high level. My experience is a lot, but I'll break it down. In college, I was president of the Student Ambassador Board for the University of Memphis in Memphis, Tennessee, where I'm originally from. That organization represents the faculty and administration and alumni of the University of Memphis, prepares agenda, and also all university matters. Businesses, in short, I own several ones. I have built from the ground up several multimillion-dollar companies that are fully staffed and self-sufficient. I have netted over 700 grand for the past few years myself. When you look in this city, I've experienced three floods over the last two years. I've helped out in every one of those floods. I know the agony people went through. I understand the streets. I've seen it in real life. I did not sit on the sidelines, rolled my sleeves up, got my hands dirty, and helped serve this city. During the recent campaign, I knocked on over 400 doors and helped, I would like to say, candidates get elected. Glad to do it, glad to serve, love to work hard. When you look for a city manager in the future, and I'll speak again later when the topic's on the agenda, just didn't want to run out of time, because it's very important to me for the city to hear about me and what I would like to do to serve in that position. When you look for a city manager, it's like a football team, NFL team, you want a franchise quarterback. You don't want a one-year guy. That's just the reality. I'm 34. I would like to remind everyone of that. Most of everyone in the council is, I would go on a limb and say, 50-plus or 50 or plus. I respect that. It means you have great knowledge, and you've lived a long life, and that's a blessing. And what a great honor it would be to take orders from you, learn from you, and be the future when you transition the baton down the road, because one day we all will die. But leaders need to rise and need to be trained by current leaders. I can learn anything. Law school proves that. When I got out of law school, I started businesses, and I learned that. You learn trial and error, and you learn from your peers as well. And I'm ready to start now. I do not have to give a two-week notice to anyone, because I own my own companies. Thank you.
Thanks, Hunter. Next up, I have Danny Fields. Welcome.
My name's Danny Fields. My address is 8114 Leo Kidd Road, and I want to thank you guys again for your service. I do want to thank you personally for the, May the 1st, for the National Day of Prayer, Mayor, being there. Frank, the police and the Sheriff Department and a lot of other people from the city, and not only from the city, Dave Mueller was there, and you guys had prayer requests, and we prayed into that, and that's what I'm here to do, is pray and to just watch God work in our lives and through our lives. So I do want to also, for time's sake, want to lift up the things that you guys are doing here. You know, we had that great event with the car show. That was a great turnout, a great event for the city. It was building public relationships. I had people stationed there myself that had a car in that. I partnered with you with that. I enjoyed the event. We need to see more positive stuff like that, what we're doing, so I thank you. And then for the festivity parade coming up, I'm going to be a part of that with you, and I'm promoting that as well and sharing, and anything to do with the centennial celebration, I'm also behind that with you guys on that and seeing how we could continue to partner and promote one another. Then on my timeframe here for Hunter, I heard what he said, that he wanted to run for a city manager. Well, from what I know of him and everything that I've seen, he's a good man. He's been behind the city. He stands behind God. He stands behind the candidates, and in Port Ritchie, he's willing to learn and grow, and he's educated. He's got the qualities. He's young. He's got the time. So for me, I hope you consider that. I will speak for others that know him, that has talked to me, and they're behind him as well to be a city manager, and so he's got my vote, but I know that decision comes down to you and the public, so I hope you take all that in consideration, his service, my service, and the service of the community that stand behind him. So I just want to say, God bless you. Thank you for all that you do, and we just need to continue to grow and hear the hearts of the people. I stand here transparent with you. I believe that he has and others, and so together we can make this a great place to live and work and play and work together. So thank you in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Danny. That's all the signups I have for general comment. If I show my hands, if anybody else like to speak? Okay, if not, bring it back. Next up is comments from the city manager. I'll pass it to Mr. Koppeler for his comments.
No comments, thanks.
Really?
Let me keep going.
All right. So let's steam on ahead. So next up is comments from boards and committees. I'll comment on the Centennial Committee we met today, obviously. Been meeting every week. We're coming up on our, kind of the end of the line. We'll make a couple reminders, the deadline to get your, each individual packet for the time capsule. Thank you. The time capsule is Thursday. Obviously, if you need a little more time, it's not going in the ground until Sunday, so try to get that done. You can write a letter, put something in there, we have that by Sunday. It's going out in the ground Sunday morning, actually, so.
Is there an event?
Yeah, yeah, so here at City Hall, I don't know what the time is.
So it should be here by Friday?
Yeah, no later Friday, I would say. The cutoff was originally the 15th, which is Thursday, so try to get that done by Friday at least. We pretty much solidified everything that we need to for this coming weekend, the mayor's ball on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the parade, and all the different things going on, so obviously encourage you all to attend as much as you can and show support. It's going to be, it's going to be a long weekend, but it's a really good thing for the city.
Do you have to register to be in the parade? Or do you just?
No, you show up and down Coombs Drive.
Maybe we need to make an announcement to that effect?
Yeah, it's been out on Facebook and this website and whatnot, and we've got, I will say we have 40-some cars that were in the car show, or at least if they weren't at the car show, they were interested in being in the parade, but so we're going to have several of the cars there in the parade. I think our fire trucks, police cars probably be in there as well. Golf carts are welcome. Bring your golf cart. The, I would encourage all council members to try to participate in parade if you can. You guys could do something together. I'll be, I think I'll be in my golf cart. I know Chopper Davis is coming, he's going to be in his golf cart. I don't know if you were taking yours or whatever, but if you guys could do something together individually, just kind of be in the parade, it'd be great.
We'll go.
I don't think there's anything else worth, no, we've got something on the agenda later on about that. The other board committee thing I wanted to bring up is, if you have a copy, Christine Sullivan has showed interest in being on the Citizens Advisory Committee as well as Historic Preservation Committee, and so I'd like to see if we get that action, we'll do separate ways each committee. So is there a motion to add Christine to the Citizens Advisory Committee?
I make a motion to have Christine Sullivan to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Oh, second, yeah.
Okay, Bob's got second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can bring back for a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome Christine to the Citizens Advisory Committee. You're going to be a great asset. She also is interested in serving on the Historical Preservation Committee, which I'll actually have another comment about that after we action this. So could I get a motion for Christine Sullivan to be added to the Historical advisor, Historic Committee, whatever it is, Preservation Committee?
So moved.
Okay. A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can put a vote, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to the Historical Preservation Committee. With that, I think that puts us at two for the Historic Preservation Committee. We had an event last Friday, Friday, yeah, Friday at the Peace Hall over in Newport Ritchie, where Tomas went through history of Port Ritchie and whatnot, and there's several historians and whatnot there. We have had a very hard time staffing that committee, and it's, we got it kind of, I think, three at one time where they, I think they met maybe once.
Once.
Yeah, once. And so I was wanting to see what the council's thoughts were on opening that up to residents outside the committee. I think there was some people that over Newport Ritchie that would love to help out with our Historic Preservation Committee, so what's you guys' thoughts on opening that up to try to get that up to staff, because we really need to do some more of that. And I'll bring another thing up as we have these events with the flood, that we've got substantially damaged properties. We probably need to be looking at any properties that were historic in nature. I know we've got some that were mentioned over on Sunset Drive. I think one, it was a historic potential. I know there's different rules for that, once they've, once they've been registered as a historic site, but I think we probably need to be proactive in looking at these properties, so as things happen, we can preserve some of the history that's there. We need a Historic Preservation Committee to kind of be active in doing that, as well as the archives and stuff, like we pulled out a time capsule, and I know we've got boxes and stuff. We really need a group to kind of take that and run with it, and we just, we aren't getting the staffing from residents to do that, so is there objections to?
I think that's fine. I mean, we get involved in stuff with Newport Ritchie, a lot of us do, so.
And we share the same history a lot, so they'd love to help out some of those folks over there. I think the committee is five members?
I think so.
And I think we maybe did a quorum adjustment on that.
Three.
It's three, minimum quorum. But if we could, is there objections to open that up to non-residents?
No.
Somebody make a motion to do?
Just by consensus, we can do. So if, Nancy, if you could, oh, it might be a charter thing, too.
I think we have to, not charter, I think it's in your codes. Let me.
It seemed like we did something along that, but I think it is part of the charter, too, so it might have to go to vote.
That's what I was trying to figure out, the resolution.
We need to get Jeopardy music for when we put Nancy on the spot. I apologize, I should have told you about this.
I don't always have it, because sometimes I don't have my own draft, and I don't have to confirm, because I have to look at my emails, it's hard to look over my phone. I am almost certain that Lori McLean stepped down.
She didn't. Cherokee's the only one left.
Oh, Cherokee, yes, Cherokee, correct.
So Cherokee and now Christine.
That's right.
So we need one more to be able to have a quorum to do anything. But if we open up, if we are able to open it up to outside members, we can, do you have a comment? Come up if you want. You got some ideas on people?
Christine Sullivan, 7808 Weber Lane. If you'd give me maybe just a little bit of time, I can possibly get that filled.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. We've got five members, so like I said, we've been trying to get it filled forever, so definitely do that. We prefer residents.
Sure.
But if we could look at opening it up just in case, obviously, we would preference residents.
Right, I think I know some people who'd probably help out with that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you all. Go forth and recruit.
You have to do an ordinance. Right now, it's limited to who resides or owns business, we want to say on a business, who resides or owns businesses or real property within the city.
Okay.
So you have to modify that. If you didn't meet those requirements.
Yeah, so by consensus, if you could look at, modify that to open it up outside the city?
Yep.
And then we'll, if we happen to fill it up before that happens or whatever, then we can reconsider.
And do you want it to just be that opened, or do you want other qualifications to require?
So how do we do the, for the Centennial, we did that committee, and we also did it for the 2125 Coastal Resilience Committee.
Those were ad hoc committees that are created by resolution, so this needs to be an ordinance. Right now, your code requires it to be someone either residing, owning a business, or owning real property in the city. So if you want to open it up to people that are not residing, owning businesses, or owning real property in the city, I just need to know how broad you want that ordinance to be. Anybody from anywhere in, or do you want it to have some of?
Yeah, I mean, I would probably want to word it so that.
Some qualification.
Like a 10-mile radius or something, or?
Yeah, we keep it somewhat local. What do you think? 10-mile radius, 15?
Yeah. People move.
What?
Newport Ritchie. We have to narrow it down.
In the county.
Well, you know, we could.
Just say in the county.
Yeah, within Pasco County, and I would.
Within the Pasco County.
Is there any, that's more, that's a big area, but there may be some.
Yeah, no one's from Tampa or Zephyr Hills, probably.
They're not going to want, nobody's coming here from Hillsborough.
That might be easier if we limit to the county.
Nobody's coming from Hillsborough. Nobody's coming from Levy County or such, or anywhere else, so that.
I don't think we need to limit, it looks like we have heard of people coming.
It's trying to be lined up, right? And I would also, let me know if you think this is pertinent or not, to basically stay in there, that candidates from within the city limits of Port Ritchie have preference. So that being, if we had two people say, "I want to be on it," one of them was a city resident, they would, they would get it.
With preference toward city residents.
Residents.
Got it, come on in.
So if we have openings or they're not filled, we'll take, he's on anybody in Pasco.
Yeah, I want it.
Okay, great. Any other boards and committees?
Yes. Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, they're summit on Thursday, and there's a contingent from this area going, both city employees in that. Three city employees, one member of the Coastal Resiliency, and three council members.
Okay.
So we've got about seven going.
City of Port Ritchie.
And I think the first meeting kicks off at 8:00 AM down in Bradenton, so it's a 6:30 drive, leave time from here, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. Carpool or whatever.
Got you. All right.
Okay. Anything else, boards and committees? Okay, we ran along the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
Motion approved. The consent agenda for May 13th, 2025.
Second. Talking about a lot enough.
I've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? See if you can put to vote, all.
Didn't have a second. Sorry, I got a second.
Yeah, Dave.
Oh, Dave got, okay.
All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up, council business. I'm number three, request to vacate a portion of Bridge Street. I'll pass it to Mr. Koppeler for introduction.
Bring this up. Port Ritchie Marina Rentals LLC has submitted a request to the city to consider vacating a portion of Bridge Street extending from its intersection with Bayview Street to the terminus at the former bridge abutment on the north bank of the Cody River. Subject segment no longer serves as an active roadway. Currently, it functions as part of a driveway and access area to the Marina Business and the restaurant Catchers, both owned by the same party. The original request was submitted in 2021 and scheduled for consideration at a council meeting in November of that year. However, the item was withdrawn by the city manager from the agenda during the meeting with the intent that it would return for future discussions. Records indicate that the request was not brought back before the council until now. When evaluating a request to vacate a public street, the city council should consider several key factors, whether the roadway is no longer necessary for public use or access, whether the proposed vacation serves a valid public interest or benefit, whether the action is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and future land use goals, whether the vacation would landlocked adjacent parcels or restrict current or future access for surrounding properties, and whether public or private utilities exist within the right of way, and if so, whether permanent easements will be preserved to allow continued access and maintenance. The city currently has underground utilities located within the Bridge Street right-of-way. Most notably, a six-inch water main runs beneath the Cody River at this location, serving as a critical conduit for providing potable water to the south side of the city. In addition, there are water sewer service lines that connect to both adjacent businesses. If the street is to be vacated, it'll be essential to retain appropriate utility easements to ensure the city can continue its access and maintain these vital infrastructure systems. At the terminus of the existing pavement on Bridge Street extending to the former bridge abutment, the city also maintains a public space. The space was formally established by ordinance in nineteen ninety-six, which designated a thirty-foot wide section of Bridge Street approximately one hundred and thirty-five feet in length for pedestrian use. The ordinance further tasks the city manager in collaboration with the Pride and Port Ritchie Committee with developing a plan to enhance and beautify the area. Since this public space falls within the area requested for vacation, the city council will need to determine its future use, preservation, or possible relocation as part of any decision on the proposed right of way vacation. In accordance with Florida law, the city must provide proper public notice and conduct a public hearing prior to approving the vacation of any public right of way. Adjacent property owners and members of the general public must be given an opportunity to comment or object. Approval must be granted through the adoption of an ordinance. If council wishes to move forward with this request, staff recommends directing the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinance for first reading and to schedule a public hearing in accordance with statutory requirements.
Thank you. So without no action tonight on this, but basically direction to move forward or not to go through that process. And we can have some discussion. And we've got the applicant here as well answering questions if you want to ask those.
Any discussion about this tonight?
Yeah, that's, discuss it.
So are we paying any taxes on that? Prostitution?
Nope.
No tax, no state tax?
Nope.
There's no, no, it's not really useful for anybody except them because there's easements right away that we can't build on it, can't even put a food truck on it. And with utilities or the ground, the sewer and the water alone, the city would have to maintain that with our upcoming water maintenance that we want to do. So the expense of the city of trying to upgrade the water and sewer alone weighs outweighs, I believe, the value of the property to us. And by waiving this to the owners of the neighbors of that property, waiving it to them, only thing you could do is create more positive tax flow by approving their business.
There, I mean, there's, there's obviously, once that's vacated, it becomes taxable land.
Right, I believe it weighs out to the benefits of the citizens way more pros than cons by doing this. And all it does is cost the city, the citizens, more money to hold onto property and restrict them from approving their property.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've known about this for a long time. I'm, I'm on board with this vacation. The, as you go down there now, accessing their property, it's really, everybody goes down there is to, you can't park on the street, right? You either go there to go to catches or the, now the marina. There is that, that public space that was there right at Port Ritchie. I don't think a whole lot of people even know about it, but to access that, you can't, you'd have to park in one of their parking spots or you had to basically walk down there, ride your bike, I guess. But again, you're going across their property. It makes sense for me to, to vacate that and get that out of, out of our hair, if you will, because it's a, it's a road that goes to nowhere. And so, you know, I'm on board with it to move forward. Any other thoughts?
I did some research and I think, just like Bob, I think it is substantially beneficial to us and to the property owners there for an increased tax value and usage to help develop our city. So I think it's a win-win for us all the way around to vacate it.
Yeah. And we'll add to that, it's not just the actual road. Obviously, if that road becomes vacated, that allows them to improve that area even more too. So there's, I think there's projects that come down the pipe that really improve that area as a result of that.
But they would still have to maintain the right of way since we have a pipe going down the center of that road, right?
Yeah, do you want to talk on the?
Well, yeah, the, the pipe is actually to the, what direction would that be? To the marina side of the right of way.
Okay.
Along the right side of that road.
Yes.
Okay. Those way, look at it.
Okay.
And most of the wrong side. But anyhow, so one of the concerns that, that I have with that is making sure that we have appropriate amount of easement for it. That pipe goes underneath the riverbed. And so there is a point where it gets deeper really quick. And if we should have to do work on that, it would require probably a little bit more than an average ten-foot amount of easement. And again, I don't know right here today if it should be fifteen foot or twenty foot, but I know it probably has to be more than the ten foot that we've probably talked about. And I know I did address it with the Lozen representative. And I don't think they were overly upset with that, that concept. The reality is it's, in, in the life of a waterline pipe is still very young. We shouldn't have to worry about that. But again, when I say that, bad things happen, so I don't want to say. And I, I think ultimately, the, the plan should be to look, to relocate that pipe and get it up on the bridge. So we don't have it going under a river.
I've been looking at that for a long time.
Right, right.
So, so I don't think there will be any issues. But again, I think out of a preponderance of precaution, we probably should have a little bit more than ten feet there.
Yeah, with that right of way, they could not build a, a building or structure over the top of that pipe, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you do have access to some point in time. I know at some point in time, we were talking about access to an under-the-river passage. Would, would there be property on the other side? That would be the east side of their building to access a.
There is.
Underway. So that could be traded.
Separate, separate topics.
Could be traded.
Different, a different issue. But I think, yeah, I, I think we've, we've had conversations regarding that. And they're, they're, you know, I would say open to the discussion with what our needs are to do that. We, we had, I think, another, with, with reduction from housing or allowing carts on there as well, you know, went down from the twenty-foot to ten-foot. It was redrawn a little bit and there's still an impact to their, their parking lot, but it's not as severe as what it would have been if you had the twenty-foot, so.
The walkways that goes around the east side of their building by the bridge, half of that is on DOT property anyway.
Yeah, okay. There's, there's some impact, but it's a lot less than what originally they were proposing. And I still think there's, you know, when we get into final design of that project, there's still ways I think to reduce that impact more.
And just, just while we're on that topic, just, just information. So the, that project underneath the bridge is MPO project. That used to be very high, maybe third on the list, I think. It was, it dropped down like thirty-three on the list. It's now back up to, I think, ten on the list. And it's, it's, right now, it's in the right of way study. So there, the, the county is, DOT is looking at what right of way needs to be acquired on both sides to make that project happen. So that's, that's very much moving forward. But again, separate, separate topic. It's, it's not a quid pro quo. You give us this, we tell you it's not what this is about. That's a totally separate thing. This is strictly about the vacation of the right of way. I will, there's probably some questions that will come up about the public space. Do you want to add any color to that?
I think, I know, I listened to everything Matt said, but I know he addressed, he addressed it. That would have to be addressed, it would have the, it would have to be a determination if we want to repeal that ordinance or have that discussion.
Right, I, I think there were some questions about.
Or maintain it some other way or have.
Right.
What, what, there's still be access with an agreement, something like that.
Yeah, I think there was some questions on whether you could technically even really create a public space from a road. Is that?
Well, I, I think, and again, this is me playing a lawyer. I, I think, you know, that was very carefully crafted to keep it a roadway. I mean, you know, they stayed away from it, creating a park, which isn't what you do on a road. And clearly said in that, that ordinance that, you know, they were going to restrict vehicular traffic, allow only pedestrian traffic. So I think it, it very narrowly created a public space, but what it really did was just restrict vehicles on that area. And then the city did other things in terms of the walkway and the plantings within.
I feel like the city's not really giving anything up. They're not really giving anything up. Nobody really uses it. They can turn it into something probably that would be much better news-wise because like, like you said, a lot of people don't even know it's there. It's a path, it's a path. Nobody goes on that path.
We're paying parks and restoration, maintain it.
I know, so, no, I, I think we should vacate.
And so procedure, we would probably have to repeal the ordinance first and then move forward with the vacation of it.
They could do it together slightly because they're both ordinances. We could, not the same ordinance, but they could, they could go with each other.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? So any objections to moving forward with that?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, same then, we'll move on. Next up is item number four, approval of resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-seven, establishing an adopt a street program to promote community involvement in the maintenance and beautification of public roadways, providing for program guidelines, authorizing the city manager or designated to administer the program and providing for an effective date. Do you need to, I pass it to Mr. Koppler for introduction.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, there was conversation about doing an adopt a street program for the city. It was brought up, the city actually had one. As we started looking at it though, we found that there really wasn't any formal council resolution that created the program. And generally, when you're doing these type of things, you do want to have council authorization that creates the program because there's going to be an expenditure of public funds. And in this case, you know, as you read what we're going to do and what was on the, the, in the program to begin with, you know, we were providing different items to the groups to do that. So we felt that we could come back, kind of start over, have, have this resolution that creates it and then move forward.
It's a great idea. I'd like to move to approve that resolution, establish an adopt a road program.
Okay, there's a second, a motion of second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Dave?
I would like to expand this to include parks as well. And the reason I, I mentioned that is because I have a group of fishermen that are interested in adopting Brasher Park. And if we adopt Coons Road all the way into Brasher Park, could they grab the road and the park in one adopt a road, park, effort?
Well, so Brasher Park is really pretty much just a road down there where you go the circle. Is that really?
No, Brasher Park is that, but I'm, I'm saying.
Are you looking at larger scope, all the parks?
Yes, I'd like to get the whole Coons, Coons Road because people throw stuff out the windows and it's an opportunity for them to grab that whole section there. In fact, I was going to present to them an oppo, this opportunity next Monday night at their monthly meeting.
The Coons, that's the road.
Coons is the road after you turn off an old post that goes all dead ends into the park.
What, I mean, the park portion is what I'm asking about. You, you want to adopt all the parks, so you get Brasher, older.
Well, you could have somebody adopt any of those parks.
So it's a great idea.
You know, but what, what I like to do is piggyback off of this effort, adopt a road and change it to adopt a road, adopt a park, you know, so it's a bigger scope. If somebody wants to adopt waterfront park, they can do that. If they want to adopt Coons Road and Brasher all in one, they could do that. And it would benefit the city. We provide, you know, their name on signs and provide the information that, how they need to do it four times a year. We provide vests, gloves and, and, you know, trash bags and stuff. And when they're done, they return the, the gear and everybody's good, everybody wins.
Is, is the current resolution that's written, other than just adding park, is there more, needs to go into that?
I believe, I don't know if the resolution itself needs more, but the application that's attached.
I think you can just, I think you can just add.
You need to add a couple.
Yeah.
Words, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's as simple as saying adopt a street, adopt a park program. I don't think it's.
And we could even put a map of the city saying, hey, these are available, sign up, you know?
And how do we, how do we, I guess, it's probably a simple response, but how do we make sure they're actually doing the job? They, you know, because sometimes these things happen, people don't do anything and all of a sudden there's trash.
They have to coordinate with us four times a year and that's what the agreement that they signed.
Okay.
So if they're not coming in four times a year, we'll know, somebody's keeping records, right?
Sure.
Where's our record keeper?
Dang, they throw everything on you.
Somebody will be assigned to keep track of records, right? So.
I think it'll give us pride and ownership.
Yep.
In our city, it'll get people pride in our parks and streets and things.
We could even have our own residents adopt a street.
I had a lot of residents going out, knocking door to door, that were talking about the trash, you know? And it just, it kind of, after the storm, we all had this really negative feel and that trash just added to it when it stayed around for so long. So I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, not a good program. I'm surprised it wouldn't follow through with. Was there a motion to?
I was going to say, so if you, if you're interested, interested in the park aspect, you could go for this one today and I can bring back an additional one addressing parks. Or if you want to have it together, this needs to wait because I need to change the title. I need to change parts of it because this is specifically to adopt a street, this not mention parks.
But the application could serve in both capacities.
It needs to be tweaked, yeah, it needs to be tweaked also.
So we can approve it with the, with the additional parks?
I would not because I need, I need time to look at it and make sure there's, we have the right stuff and there may be more conversation to have if I come, come across something I don't expect right now to come across.
I think we roll with approval of the one we have and then we'll add, add parks later.
Yeah, the only, the only thing on that is you have extra code. It's somewhat duplicative, right? So if we could combine them together, it might be less, if one program is opposed to two separate programs, if you make a change in one, if you want to.
What's your thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I don't care, we can do it that way.
I just want to get some feet under and get it running.
Yeah, well, it'd only, it'd only be delayed one meeting, right? So next, yeah, two weeks from now.
So were we saying combine them?
I mean, I, I look, I look for opportunities to simplify things. If it's, if it's two programs, the only real difference is, is park or road. We don't need to create two separate programs, one for park, one for road, unless there's a need to have specifics for each.
But right now, is there anybody coming, knocking on the door saying they want to adopt the road today? Yeah, so waiting a week or two weeks is probably not going to be a problem, right?
And, and something else that was partnered with the adopt a road program was adopt a tree program. And so I think if you're going to do the parks, you might as well throw adopt a tree in there and we can kind of roll it all into one.
What's all that look like? What's an adopt a tree look like? I mean, are we taking care of its nutrients? Are we having somebody come out and tell us the condition of the tree? What's, what's an adopt?
Are you talking about like historic trees?
Yeah, people would give you money to plant a tree.
Okay.
Yeah, to add trees, which is something we, we need to do, add trees to the city, but.
How's that, is it, is that an opportunity to, if one needs to be taken down as well? Or is it just strictly for new trees?
Yeah, you would, you would adopt down a tree that needs to be taken down.
Well, I was just thinking, it had some issues with dead trees or whatever. That wasn't the city's responsibility and it was residents did that, but if there was an organization, it would.
Yeah, I mean, this, this again is for parks and, and other city property that needs trees.
Okay, so it's basically adopt a tree is to.
Yeah, to plant a new tree in there, yeah.
I think, to me, that sounds like a whole nother program. You know, if we're going to clean up trash, we're cleaning up trash, adopt a tree, that's a whole different deal. We could keep attaching all these little things forever, I think. I think we've nailed it right now with adopt a, adopt a street and adopt a park.
So is there?
I'm fine coming back with it the next time altogether.
Yeah, so by consensus, is it, is there objections to?
Well, there's a motion and a second, do you have to withdraw to do that?
I made a motion.
Did we make a motion?
I did.
You made a motion, yeah, Bob made a second. I seconded it.
Okay, let's go back, so who made the motion?
Bob did.
I made a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I seconded it.
And that, and that's to, to?
To do the adopt a street program with the park. Nancy's done. We haven't talked about the park yet.
We need to amend the, the motion to include the park.
Right, so you wanted to keep them separate or you want to?
I think put them, Bob, Bob unit at the motion.
That would be fine, make a motion to approve roads and parks would be fine. And Nancy, that's okay with you?
And I'm good with second.
Okay, so I've made a motion of that and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? Does anyone put to vote, all in favor, say five, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Did you want anything on the adopt a tree during this too or? Just drag one?
Wait, wait till somebody tells you.
Another day?
I think that's another day.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not on here.
Very well.
I mean, it's like, when do we stop? You know.
Focus.
Okay, next up? I'm just trying to be facilitative. Item number five, approval of resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-eight, providing for a temporary waiver of fire inspection fees imposed by resolution number twenty-three dash fifteen for special events connected to the city of Port Ritchie's centennial celebration and providing for an effective date. I'll pass it to Mr. Koppler for introduction.
City Centennial Committee, established by resolutions twenty-four oh seven and twenty-four twenty-six, has organized a series of public events to commemorate the hundredth anniversary of the city of Port Ritchie. Some of these events will include food and non-food vendors, which are subject to a hundred and fifty dollar fire inspection fee per event under resolution twenty-three fifteen. Additionally, it should be noted that these participants are subject to a hundred dollar application fee. However, there is no authorizing to council resolution for this fee,
However, there is no authorizing council resolution for this fee, so its waiver is not subject to council approval. Uh, the two events that this impacts, the centennial celebration festival, approximately, uh, twenty-five tent vendors, fifteen food trucks, at least this was written, and the centennial celebration fireworks, approximately fifteen food trucks, will take place on May seventeenth and eighteenth respectively. To encourage vendor participation and enhance public engagement in these milestone events, the centennial committee has formally requested waiver of fire inspection fees. Resolution number twenty-five twenty-eight would authorize temporary waiver of these fees exclusively, exclusively, assuming, for events scheduled or organized and voted by the centennial committee in connection with the city's centennial celebration.
Okay, I'll add a little color to that as we discussed some things around that today at the centennial committee. Um, originally we had fees for the tent vendors, um, because we, we rolled events together. Um, we had a separate, uh, uh, tent type, uh, event where you had, people could sell, ride sale type stuff in their tent. I think for residents it would be like ten dollars and then vendors was like forty or fifty. Um, that got rolled into the Saturday. Um, and so now we, we had, um, uh, that we decided that there was going to be no fees at all for the tent type vendors, but the food trucks would still pay the hundred dollar fee. Um, today, uh, uh, we, we voted to waive the fees across the board. So there's, there's not any fees being collected at all for a participation in that event. Um, as of right now, anybody that needs a fire inspection would have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars and that's what this is to waive that as well. So, but just want to make transparency, there's no fees coming in at all on the participation side, uh, for any vendors. Uh, and this would be removing the fire inspection fee. They would still have a fire inspection, but we wouldn't charge a fee for it. Impact the city would probably be a few hundred dollars, I guess, cost.
Yeah, I think, you know, the intent still to have, uh, the fire department do the inspections. Um, I'm guessing it's probably a few hours at most to do that. So one, one employee or two employees hour do that is, is a couple hundred bucks at most.
But I noticed that you had, uh, uh, dollar figures attached here, uh, for these kinds of fees. But these are probably unbudgeted fees. We didn't have those in the budget. These are just gravy on top. So really isn't an impact per se.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted you to be aware of, of that number.
Right.
Um, during the, the committee meeting earlier, I, I made kind of the same comment that, that, you know, this, this was never considered as part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. In fact, um, what was considered was the fundraising for it. We had budgeted forty thousand. I think we're up over forty-eight thousand right now. So they did a great job in getting people out to donate. And so this was never considered. It was never a number that needed to be a part of, you know, the overall program cost. We're doing the centennial, so, um, I think, you know, the way that this was kind of going to be rolled out, it created a dual system that some people were going to get charged, but others doing somewhat similar things, but because they're doing it from a tent, wouldn't get charged. And, uh, as I said earlier, uh, in the meetings before this, that, that, you know, this, this is an event that you want to have good feelings all around. You want people to walk away thinking good things about the city and wanting to come back and do the next one. Because I, I truly think that you're going to be looking to do more of these type of events as time goes on. And you want as many, uh, food vendors and tent vendors you can get for those events.
Well, let me ask a quick question. Are food trucks required to have a fire inspection and, and a health license and all that stuff with accounting anyway?
Um, I don't know necessarily about the fire inspection piece, but I know they have to get food license and their truck has to be inspected from, from a, a health perspective. Um, I think we, we require that they, they undergo that fire inspection.
Can, can they do that one time? That's good for, or something like that, or is it per event?
Well, that's, they're all different trucks. They're all different layouts, all different types of systems.
All the events are different. Different events require different things.
Propane tanks.
Yeah, and I think the danger in, in, in granting a one-time fee and then, is that they may add something different to the truck that, you know, if, if the event was in, in January and then they have an event in July and they added a new boiler that has more propane tanks and I just, I, I think it, it probably is better to, to go the way that, that, you know, we've, we've kind of scheduled this out is every time you have that event, we, we do inspection.
So the whole, the whole point is to waive the fees to encourage more participants, but still do the inspections. So it's still safe. Yeah, it's still safe. So all, all we're done is waive the fees.
Yeah, I would like us to use this as kind of a catalyst to look at what we're doing in the city here. And, you know, some of the conversations I've had with, uh, with, with residents out there is they like these kind of, like the car show you guys just had. Man, that was like, it was well attended. People were there. They had a good time. Those are the kind of things we need to be known for. We don't want everybody rolling over to our neighbors over here. We want to start developing these environments here. We have this huge park. If we make it easy for the people to come here versus hitting them, you know, for the hundred and fifty, whatever. And, and I would think, Gary, you would probably agree, having those people come in here and giving them a little break on the fees is, is really just giving us a starter to get them coming.
The fees that we instituted are countywide. Everybody's the same. Newport Ritchie's the same. Pasco County's the same. So we piggyback off of the program that was already in place.
Yeah, the only difference is, is they've got it going on right now. We're trying to get it going on, you know? We're trying to get started here and I just think it, it's a great opportunity for us to do that. So I'm not against beating you guys. Trust me. I want to make sure we, we do that as much as possible, but I also want to get this little city started and get it on the roll. And some of these events we're talking about here can make that happen. So I want us to have a flavor for doing that, you know, as a group, uh, to make sure that we're being friendly to these outside people to get them to come in and participate. I had a lady today talk to me about having a craft fair. I mean, these are things that are important. Other cities have these craft fairs on the weekend where they come in, all these vendors come in, they share their crafts and, you know, have art and all kinds of stuff. You know, these are different things we can do here that make a difference.
Craft fairs for us are, aren't a big deal. There's no explosive danger, no big hazards for those. It's propane tanks, the generators that they're using, mom and pop scenarios where they just put a rig together to go sell hot dogs or, or make some barbecue. That's, that's our issue. That's when it became across the board, countywide, for us, state, cities, effort hills.
Totally agree with you. I've seen some of these food trucks and the propane lines are running across the grill and you're like, what in the world's that? You know, I get it. Yeah. So I, this is just a temporary thing though, right, for us here.
Yeah, just for the.
Temporary. I was just thinking overall, uh, you know, bigger picture.
And again, inspections will still happen. They would be free.
Yeah.
So is there a motion for approval?
Go ahead, Nick. Go ahead. I'm, I'm good.
Dave Mueller.
Motion to approve. Uh, waiving the fire inspection fees.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Any fire comment? Bring back for a vote on favor six five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, next up, I have number six. Approval of resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-nine, authorizing Point Distillery's use of the city of Port Ritchie's centennial logo on a centennial product, providing for severability and providing for effective date. I'll pass it to Mr. Copley for introduction.
At a recent, actually last week, uh, centennial committee meeting, Chairman Hoover presented an option to the committee to use centennial celebration logo to promote a limited one hundred dollar run of spiced rum from Port, Point, excuse me, Point Distillery. The committee voted in favor, move forward, and at the advice of the city manager and city attorney to draft a resolution for presentation to the council for approval and subsequent action. Bottles we purchase at cost distributed during the centennial mayor's ball by the Spartan Manor because they are the ones with the liquor license. I get into that whole distribution model that has to happen, but I'd rather not. But I'm turning it over to.
Yeah, I, I had a little color for that. So, um, we thought that, um, it'd be kind of cool to have a limited edition. And I've got the label up here to show you. This is what's, there's two sides. I, I slipped through it. But, um, basically to commemorate the centennial, um, a limited one hundred bottle release, basically a bottle for every year of, of, uh, our, our life here in the city. And, uh, we, we talked about different things. We thought aged spiced rum would be, uh, cool. Obviously rum being a Florida, Florida staple, um, so, and we wanted to have a little color to it. So, uh, we can do aged spiced rum. Uh, Point Distillery is doing this for us at their cost, basically. Um, I don't have the exact bottle amount, but it's going to be, I think, uh, four something a bottle, uh, is what processing and, and all that runs. Um, they're, so they're pretty much just doing it, even probably a little bit of a loss because they want to, they want to do something cool for the centennial. And so part of that process, um, when they, when they create something, and they, they do stuff for the Rolling Stones and, and other entities, um, to, to do these, they have to submit the label to the government for approval and apply a state and there's different things. Once they put it together and produce it, then it has to go to a distributor, uh, and then that distributor then takes it on to a, uh, an endpoint to sale. Um, Spartan Manor has agreed to do that. They have the appropriate license to be able to take that facility, take the sale of this. So it's not something the city could sell. Um, it's either that or like a liquor store. Um, but, so Spartan Manor would basically pay that upfront, um, and then.
Then they're selling it by the bottle.
They would sell it by, in the committee, uh, to meet to figure out what the pricing would be on that. Uh, and then they would basically take the proceeds and donate that back to the city. It would be kind of the flow.
We don't know what the price for you to do.
Yeah, the, obviously there's, there probably going to be significant demand for it. Um, Rich and I kind of thought maybe twenty-five, thirty bucks a bottle or something like that. Um, no more than fifty, I would think. Um, it really, it's, it really kind of all depends on how much demand we'd have. Uh, I, I would think in that price point, twenty-five, thirty dollars a bottle, they would sell out very quickly. I'll probably buy ten myself, just to.
And that's at the, uh, going to be sold at the mayor's.
So the, the intent would be to, the, the intent was to have them there at the mayor's ball, but that's not going to be possible because of the, the government time to get labels approved and whatnot. Um, and so they would, um, we'd have some, like a sample bottle. I'm trying to work on that to kind of advertise it. We could take pre-orders, if you will, um, and then once, once it was available, then, uh, Spartan Manor could distribute those. We could actually take the orders at the city side. I think it's a conversation me and Nancy had. We could take the orders for that. The money wouldn't change hands here at the city. We'd say, okay, Chris Mayer wants a bottle. Spartan Manor would then fulfill that. They would take the payment. They would deliver the product. And at the end of the sales, Spartan Manor could then donate back to the city, uh, a portion of those proceeds. Fair enough.
I would prefer the city not to be involved at all. Spartan Manor do all of it.
And let them keep the.
That's my preference.
So has, uh, Brian and Greg Lick been informed of this?
As what that?
Oh, their house is in the centerpiece of the logo.
So, so they approve the use of the logo for whatever we decided want to do.
Even for profit?
Well, it, it's not really for profit.
No, I know, but that's, they should just be explained as all. I don't want to be surprised. They see it on a bottle of liquor, their house and the logo.
Yeah, we, we could definitely run it by them.
Just so you don't get surprised.
But, yeah, I will say that, um, in the agreement, we can use it for whatever we want.
We obviously didn't anticipate this particular activity, though, at least what we said.
And we, we say for profit too, as we, as we were having these events, we selling tickets to different things or whatever, so there is, it's not really a profit.
I don't see a problem unless they get surprised.
Yeah, no, and I'll let them know.
I know Brian, yeah, that's all.
Yep. Yeah, and I, they probably, I would imagine they would think that'd be cool.
Yeah, very possible. But I tried that with them, with the Cody River Brewing Company and they did adamantly no. So I'm just saying, just let them know. With this, this is a different situation and I don't see it'd be a big, big problem. A lot of their notified.
Yeah.
Did, did our purchase of that picture, and did they provide the picture?
They gave to us.
They gave us that picture that we used in the logo.
That's correct.
But anybody can take a picture of that house and there's not an issue.
Right, okay. I mean, it's more of a courtesy than anything else.
Right, yeah, I get it. I can call them tonight. I don't think it's a big deal, but just, I don't like the surprise.
Yeah, good point. Um, there, just so you know, the, um, obviously if, if we were to sell all these or whatever, you, again, I'm not saying one way or another, but, um, it is kind of a neat thing that, uh, if, if, if we decided that we wanted to continue to have that exist out there, obviously we're not selling it. We're not doing anything. But, you know, rent the store and buy it. They can serve it in the bars in, in the city or whatever. It might be a, a neat thing to, to have on the shelf. Um, we could look at, maybe go on, uh, further with it to extend it. But the, the intent for this is just have one hundred bottles. It's kind of a souvenir type piece.
I mean, it's a cool idea.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
So, and here's the, so this is the front of the label. This is the backside. So I'll, I'll read it out. So it's cheers to a hundred years, a toast to the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, founded in nineteen twenty-five along the beautiful Pithapulcosi River. The city of Port Ritchie has long stood as a proud symbol of Florida's coastal heritage from its early days as a fishing village to becoming a vibrant community. The city embodies resilience, charm, and a centennial of cultural richness. This bottle celebrates a legacy, a limited release of handcrafted aged spiced rum to honor a century of memories, crafted in partnership with the city of Port Ritchie to celebrate its centennial nineteen twenty-five to twenty twenty-five. And then, of course, the government warning on there, so.
So it says aged spiced rum. We can really age it if we put it into the.
The time capsule, yeah.
Yeah, put a bottle in there.
Yeah, that would be great.
We won't have that one available by then, but that, yeah, I was, I was thought about.
Well, we could.
We.
No way.
Yeah.
Bob and weave, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Question?
Uh, it's not a question. I've got a statement. Um, you know, I mean, you guys know I don't drink, okay? So I'm not going to be, I'm not going to go, yeah, let's go get two of those and put them up there. But here's something else. You know, we're talking about revive one of the city. We're talking about bringing the city back from the brink of the flood and all this other stuff. I've met tons of people here that are, they're, they're, they're addicted to alcohol. They're dying. They're killing themselves. And here we are. We're like, hey, get another one to put on your shelf. That's all. I just, I don't think it kind of, I don't think it's our place to do that. This is my opinion. I think if, if, if catches wanted to do it or wanted to, you know, that's what they do, but as a city council, I don't think we should. And whoever came up with the idea, God bless, you know, I'm good with that, but I just, I, I don't think it's something that we should jump on and say, yeah, we want to make sure this happens. You know, let's sell a hundred bottles and put it in everybody's home kind of thing.
Yeah, again, the, the idea is not to provide alcohol to folks. It's healthy.
We can say responsibly also.
Let's give them a mug, you know what I'm saying, with the same thing on it versus the alcohol, you know?
They're never gonna open. One tank's gonna sit on a shelf.
True.
And some people won't drink any of it.
I'll give you an example, and I'm not going to mention any names, but I was in, I was in a resident's house the other day and, and the house is in a financial disarray, okay? In other words, it's a bad place, okay? Like maybe going to foreclosure, you know? And right then, beep beep, the FedEx guy pulls up. He's delivering a bottle of commemorative liquor to the house. Probably was a hundred dollar bottle of liquor. I'm thinking to myself, this doesn't even make sense. You know, this house is getting ready to go into foreclosure and this person's ordering liquor through the.
How do you know they bought it? You're being judgmental. How do you know they bought it?
I don't, I don't think, I don't bring up much like this. I'm just, it's not judgmental. It's just me understanding. I've got vision to see things.
I'm just saying. You don't know?
I mean, it was ten a.m., but he was hammering down early in the morning, so.
So, you know, the, my opinion, and, you know, alcohol is legal. It, uh, used appropriately is perfectly fine. Um, there are people that abuse that. People abuse, I mean, we have, for example, there's, there's opioids that are prescribed for pain. Um, people get addicted to them and they, they abuse them. Do we outlaw opio- opo- opioids? Oifil? What is opioids? It's a tough word to say. Do we outlaw that and, and because of, of those folks that do that? Again, this is, yeah, it's a city thing. You know, we're not in the business, the alcohol business. This is, it's just something I thought was a unique type souvenir. Um, I can tell you, you know, I have a drink now again. I, I don't abuse it. Um, I would buy one of these and never open it.
Buy ten.
Uh, well, and the reason, and the reason I would buy ten would be to give them to people. Um, I, I think it'd be great if I went to Tallahassee was to give this to, you know, some of the legislators up there. I think there's, I mean, it's a, it's that kind of thing. It's really a memento, a, a very unique, very cool type thing. So that's kind of why I was on board with it. Again, I don't, I don't, I don't want to see anybody fall into the, the, the alcohol problem. I, I have family members that have been there, um, and it's unfortunate and it's, uh, you know, don't be done it at all. But again, for the, for the, the ability to, to do something special for, to commemorate our centennial, that's kind of where I was going, so.
And I see, I see your point and, and I know people do abuse it. I've heard a few people close to me and, uh, it's, it's a bad situation. But this isn't really like forcing anybody to do anything, uh, even though I do agree with what you're saying. Uh, that being said, Pasco County has their own beer made by Big Storm Brewery, Florida Sports Coast Beer. Um, and it's not uncommon to see that. This is limited, the one-time thing, I believe. And, uh, we should also, maybe we could do something like, you know, recommend drink responsibly. And, uh, we should also, maybe we could do something like, you know, recommend drink responsibly and maybe have someone speak even from AA, there is about drinking if you want to do that.
Yeah, it did. Then they, they, the government warning's on there. According to certain general women should not drink alcohol. Beverage should be per se because of the risk effects.
You don't misunderstand what I'm saying either way. Thank you, Bob, for mentioning that, but I'm just going to tell you straight up. My mother and father both died from alcoholism. Okay.
I know a lot of people that had this.
Uh, the other day I was in my campaign and I was riding down the road and I saw this Jeep riding down Old Post. The guy went from the ditch to the center of the road and back again here and like this, you know, I'm thinking, what if my daughter was driving home on this road? That's all I'm saying. I mean, I just don't want to be part of that. I'm not poo-pooing on you. I love you and I want you. And if you want to have a drink, that's up to you. You know what I'm saying? You know I don't, but I'm just, I, I just don't know that we're going to hang our hat on that. That's.
The one thing we know for a fact, your mom and dad didn't buy from this rum and that person driving down our road wasn't drinking this rum.
I get it. I get it.
That's what we know. And I, I don't, I don't see this as promoting drinking. This is, that's not what we're doing here. Now, now if we, if we went on and we kind of kept that out there, then maybe I make that argument, but for this limited release, it's not like we're, we're just, we're providing something as a token, uh, of memory type thing that they could put on their shelf in their bar or whatever. Again, we're not promoting drinking. It's just providing this unique one-time thing for the event. So we can kill the project too. It's, it was an idea that, uh, uh, that I had that I thought was unique and it would be something that people could have and, and look back on, you know? It's something you see. So if you, if you're not interested, we can kill it and I'll let them know tomorrow. But the, uh, the committee did move forward with it. That's where we're at.
Well, I'd like to, to move to approve the, uh, the use of the centennial logo by Point Distillery for centennial product.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Uh, Marissa Russell, eight one four four Washington Street. I just, you know, I, I wanted to speak on behalf of, you know, my peers. Um, I'm twenty years old, so I don't drink. So I was wondering if there is some kind of other option that is open to those who are non-drinkers, those who don't want to even quote promote it either, because I'm not one that doesn't promote drinking either. But like something like a city flag or, you know, smaller flags for the kids or those for their, are in the younger age that, you know, uh, don't want to necessarily think on that level, but want to think on something else of, of hope for our city and of, of love and cleanse, cleanliness, cleanliness and everything, you know, and, you know, not necessarily, uh, cause I know a lot of people my age and a lot of kids younger than me that, you know, their families come from that alcoholic situation and they don't, they, it's a bad memory for them. It's something that brings depression. And, you know, I think it would be a great idea if we did have something that's open to those who don't want anything to do with that. You know, or, you know, just another option for those who don't drink, those who aren't into alcohol, you know, just something to maybe consider for since, since it is a really great celebration as our city.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we, this, we do got t-shirts and coins and there are some other things.
Yeah. Well, I'm staying on a more, um, like you're saying, how this bottle is something that's very significant. A t-shirt can be thrown and forgotten about. A coin can be thrown and forgotten about.
Mug or coffee mug?
I was thinking of a coffee mug.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know, something to just promote for the younger generation or those who aren't necessarily promoting, you know, an alcoholic or, you know, a rum.
Coffee mug.
You know, I'm just, you know, I was just saying, I'm not playing favorites either. I'm just saying, you know, on behalf of my generation, it's something that, you know, I think that should definitely always be considered when we're thinking of these celebrations as well. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? She's ready to roll.
Do I need the name and all that?
Yeah.
Christine seventy-eight, oh, Christine Sullivan, seventy-eight oh eight Weber Lane. Could you do a spark, could the, this place maybe just come up with a sparkling beverage that could go in a similar bottle with a similar label and just that would appease everybody?
Uh, I, I don't, I could ask if they do any.
I mean, they could even like buy it and, you know what I mean? Like just something, yeah, something.
I like that. That's great.
Anything that they could just put in the bottle, similar bottle, just change the label up a little bit that it's a non-alcoholic and then everybody gets something that they.
I can ask a question. What's, what they have there?
You know, just.
Sure.
Grape juice, whatever.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Pastor?
My name is Jessica, eight one four four Washington Street. Basically, uh, in, in regards to all of that, um, when it comes to like our generation, I'm twenty-six. So when it comes to our generation around my age group, um, a lot of us are more keen to kind of more, more family oriented. We're more interested in that if you kind of want to hear when it comes to that. So when it comes to the pole of like alcohol and stuff like that, it's not something that majority of us, i- as far as the trend goes, is what we're seeking. In fact, we're trying to draw back from that. So when you encourage something like that, it's, it's more of a negative spin when it comes to that. So when it comes to our generation, I'm just speaking on my behalf from people that I know, family, friends, um, I would say something like that. It's coming up with something that really is more family oriented because that's something that we're more interested in, if that, if that makes sense. Something that would, you know, negate or take that away, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Florida, I'm actually not a resident of Port Ritchie.
That's fine.
I'm neighboring city, so, uh, we're six thirty-eight Durney Street, Newport Ritchie.
What's your name?
Joshua Russell.
Thank you.
And so I'm a local business owner and I'm kind of on the same bandwagon right there. So in our neighboring community, uh, everybody I meet on the street, my neighbors, um, they're all, that trend is actually happening. Um, they're more form, uh, family oriented and definitely if you want to encourage more uh, local business owners, especially I'm a long, uh, in landscaping business. So we try to like, uh, as far as what you mentioned with the trash and all that, oh yeah, you know, like I do a lot of vacant lots, parking lots. And, um, a lot of the retail and everybody I've run into are kind of done with that. They're, they're looking for more family oriented projects. And, uh, definitely if you want to commemorate something very historical, like one hundred year, uh, definitely I think family oriented, um, project such as maybe a t-shirt or a coin or something, but definitely that's the moving trend in my age group. Uh, between, I would say between, uh, I'm twenty-six, between twenty-six, thirty-six, a lot of, a lot of residents in the area uh, within that age group, they're looking for more family oriented, uh, commemorations. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dan?
Eighty-one fourteen Leo Kid, Danny Fields. Uh, I, I'm in agreement. I, I know what we're trying to do, but there's a positive side to that and a negative, and you've already heard that through them. So the, the, the positive side is, you know, we could get our logo out there. But what is our logo going to stand for when I go away from waterfront park or, or any event? Do I, do I remember the alcohol or do I remember the car show or, or the parade? Or something that is going to reach all generations, that's going to set a positive tone. You know, that the event was more about not so much the logo, but about the city and what the city stands for. So see, you got a negative side to it and a positive side. So the positives, we could have hats, we could have banners, we could have car magnets. There's so many ways that we could attach that to family, to events, to, uh, businesses and, and and then they'll think of that, not just that bottle with that logo on it. I mean, it, it's, it's a good concept, but as I say here, I used to drink, uh, you know, I, I know the consequences from drinking. Uh, it could change people's personalities, moods. It could get out there, cause more wrecks. So I don't want to be myself, have a city or, or socialized with that myself. But I will be behind all the other kind of good stuff. So I hope when you make the decision on this and vote, that you would take that in consideration. Do we want to be known as the, the rum city or the city that is there for the people to promote good things? We don't have alcohol in our parks. We do not have alcohol at our fireworks shows because it just brings a lot of drinking and driving and incidents, uh, police has to deal with the fire. So to me, attaching that to that puts that negative side to it. So I'll leave it there at that. That's one of the reasons we come up here to just, to present our hearts and, and a new generation that's going to raise up. So you, so I see it as Port Ritchie not only being an old, bunch of old folks living here. We got a new generation that's going to be raised up, that's going to be influenced. And we got to listen to their heart. I mean, I mean, I, I'm proud that my family, some of them drank, some of them don't, and they do it, you know, responsible. But what I want to put my name to, that's where I'm at. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll be quick. They've covered it all. I, Hunter Dawson, fifty-six twenty-one, Egritz Place. I totally agree with everything you all said. I respect it, support it. Thank you, Chris, for saying that. Respect that and support that. Also respect the mayor as you as well. Um, it's just opinions from the public. That's all. There's no disrespect to anyone.
None taken.
We all want peace, um, and community here. Uh, my opinion would be the same as, um, them. It would be with the community of, uh, family oriented, like a legal, that would be family, it would be good for a baby all the way up to however old you are. And Lord has blessed you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing now, I'll bring it back for any further discussion and or. Uh, before we put the vote, I'm going to just clarify, um, a little bit here. So again, nobody has to buy this. Okay? Just like nobody has to buy a t-shirt. Nobody has to go to the mayor's ball. Nobody has to go to any of these places. Nobody has to participate in this. So it's by us providing, and, and I even say it's, we're not really providing, it's a, uh, it's a Point Distillery is providing it. They just want to make any part of our celebration to, that's a product. Could be frisbees, could be coffee cups, could be shirts, could be the plethora of things, right? There are people that collect alcohol. Um, former councilman Tom Cessella, it sounds on here, but, um, he, he goes and buys special commemorative bottles of alcohol, uh, my understanding, from all kinds of places. And so that provides something for him to add to his collection. And so I want to be perfectly clear here. There's, there's no promotion of drinking or promotion of anything. It's just a product that the distillery puts together with our logo on it. It doesn't reflect upon us that somebody was to buy all a hundred bottles, drink them and go out and, I mean, they could, they could do that with any other alcohol. And again, any other aged spice, aged spice rum that's out there, this is just a, again, a commemorative, commemorative item for the people that do like that sort of thing to make it available. And so, you know, and I, and I will also say, and I, you know, I feel, thank you for your comments. Okay. I am a Christian, unapologetically, believer in Jesus Christ. And the last thing I want to do is, is to put somebody in position where they would lose, uh, their faith. And that's what that not, this is not what this is about. There's, there's, uh, the responsibility of an individual to, to do his own thing is, is on that individual, right? And God provides those, those free will for those type of things. If you want to partake of them, you can. If you don't, you, you, you don't have to. And so while I hear what you're saying, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that we can't have this type of, uh, item available for, for, uh, purchase for those that do want to collect it and commemorate the centennial. Like I said, I would want one myself. And, you know, I don't, drinking in and of itself, alcohol in and of itself, it's not a sin. Jesus turned water into wine. Now, green wine back in the day was not as potent was. The wine is still, uh, it's still wine. A little wine is good for the belly. I think it also references. So I just want to put that out there. I, I, when I, when I vote in favor of this, I don't want to, anyone to think, uh, poorly of anybody who'd vote yes for this, that they're propagating sin, because that's not what this is about. It's simply a, an item that, uh, somebody wants to put out there to commemorate our centennial. So then I'm.
So I'm glad you get your, you put your statement out there. I'm going to put mine out there too. We as a city, okay, can pour into things that are good. And we've got three or four young children under the age of thirty-six out here right now telling us they're not, they're not going that way. So we as the leaders of the city, we can either say, and I'm not, I'm not talking down about you having a bottle in your thing. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about us partaking in that, becoming our, we got, we own that. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to vote. We're all going to vote for that right now. I don't think it's our place to do that. Virginia, or your Ford alcohol and beverage thing, whatever it is, that's different, but we're the city council. And I just don't think we ought to hang our hats on any alcohol. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call roll call vote.
Mayor Hoover, what's your vote?
Hi.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, what's your vote?
Mayor.
Councilman Mueller, your vote?
Yay.
Councilman Hubbard, your vote?
Yay.
Councilwoman Burke, your vote?
Yay.
Okay, motion carries. And yeah, thank you for your calls, comments. Appreciate you coming. Um, I'm number seven here, local agreement with the city of Newport Ritchie for delineation of municipal services to the Manatee Point. I pass it to Mr. Crawford for introduction.
You may remember we had a, uh, conversation about this some time back. It all started, uh, relatively shortly after the hurricanes. We had a resident that lives on Manatee Point. And because of the, the nature of the property ownership or, or more, more exactly, the nature of the city lines, boundaries, running through the front portion of the properties that are on the, it's the west side, right side, as we look at it, I guess, of the roadway. And because of that, there was a lot of, uh, issues for that resident who wanted to demolish their house and build a new one. And there wasn't a clear delineation of whose responsibility, which building department did that resident have to go to because of that wine going down through there. And so as you might recall, uh, Newport Ritchie and the manager of Newport Ritchie and myself, we had a conversation about, um, coming up with a way to divide those properties up. So the residents would know very clearly that, um, if I'm getting a building permit, I'm going to, uh, Newport Ritchie or I'm going to Port Ritchie, uh, depending upon how it was broken up. So the map that was laid at your desk in front of you first off, um, apologize for not getting that in your packet, kind of shows that delineation. So the yellowish green properties, which are primarily in the middle, are those that are going to fall under the jurisdiction of Newport Ritchie. And the way that came up with this primarily is that most of the house on those properties is on the, uh, portion or the lot of the two lots that are in Newport Ritchie. Where those that are in blue, the majority of the house, if not all the house, is in the city of Port Ritchie. And so effectively four properties are going to Newport Ritchie, uh, five properties would be under the jurisdiction of the city of Port Ritchie. And we're talking about in terms of services, the building permits and inspections, uh, law enforcement and fire services, solid waste collection, uh, public works maintenance and recreation services. What it doesn't include is water and sewer service, because most of those, I think all of them actually are being serviced by the city of Newport Ritchie and not, not the city of Port Ritchie. And I, we sent a letter out to, uh, the five properties that would stay within our jurisdiction. Um, I did hear back from three of them, spoke to two, was playing phone tag with the third. There doesn't appear to be any, uh, issues in this. I think some of them were very happy that they would be clear, clearly delineated who they call and where they go to. I think the biggest concern they were having was they'd have to change your address. But in this case, they wouldn't have to change your address. Um, again, this is merely a way for the two cities to understand the jurisdictions related to those, those services. So we can help our residents, uh, do the things that they need to do.
Good question. Are we changing the tax rolls to reflect? So, so we're just doing this with a handshake effectively?
Well, we're doing it with a interlo.
Resolution.
Yeah, well, interlocal agreement.
But the taxes will still continue the way they reside today.
Yeah.
In a checkerboard pattern rather than just draw lines.
Correct.
Down the center of the street.
And so that's, you know, the, the real, I guess, definition of how this is divided is that the majority of the property tax for that. is that the majority of the property tax for that, that house, those that are going to Newport Ritchie will be under the authority of Newport Ritchie, and those that are going to the city of Port Ritchie will stay under the jurisdiction of Port Ritchie.
Was there any interest to draw, drawing a line down the center of the road? Those on the north and those on the south would be Newport Ritchie in, in exchange for other properties that we might have where it's a checkerboard kind of?
There's probably a longer term process to that.
This, if you, did you get backstory for the?
This solves the problem immediately.
Immediate problem for the services there, right?
But the potential is, long term, we need to look at trimming these lines into, you know, a complete plan, you know?
Property all over the city needs to be annexed, it's like a chessboard.
Yeah, and so like, since this last meeting, we, we engaged planning board to do some annexation review.
Right.
Looking at, so this, this would be part of that.
Okay.
Well, this, I would say no, because you're not really talking about annexation, because, you know, this, this, this would be, you know, the opposite of annexation, where, you know, those, either the, those that are in the city of Port Ritchie today would have to come out of the city of Port Ritchie and go to Newport Ritchie, and those properties that are in Newport Ritchie would have to come out of Newport Ritchie to go to the city. And so there's, there's a lot more to that. I mean, I think there may even be legislative, state legislative things that we'd have to do there, potentially.
Tax rules aren't changing here.
Right.
All it is is service.
Correct.
Which is this interlocal agreement's going to solve that problem. We know, they know, our utility guys know, and we go from there.
Everything north of 5436 and north of Manatee is going to be under our jurisdiction as far as codes. And then the tax rules, we can work out later, hopefully can, or not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll tell you that, that, you know, we, we didn't talk about that because I think both of us knew that neither of us want to give up our tax revenues.
Sure.
And so this, again, is very clean related to being able to go to the residents and say, this is who you could call if you need a building permit, if you need a police officer, if, you know, in our case, we don't provide solid waste collection, but Newport Ritchie does. You know, if you need public works to do something alongside the road.
So they're always going to have to be on board with it. They said anything?
Yeah, so, um, both cities, so Newport Ritchie sent letters out to those four, and I sent letters out to the five. As I said, I've heard back from three of the five. Two of them I've been able to speak with, one I was playing phone tag with, we still haven't connected. But to, to a person, the, the concerns they had was about changing their address, which they wouldn't have to change your address. One of them talked about thinking that they were going to be changing their water services to us, and again, that wouldn't be a part of this. So there really has been, actually, the two that I spoke to, one definitely is going through the building process to build a new house. There's a second one that is thinking of demolishing, rebuilding, so this would clear the way for that person to know exactly where to go to.
Or either one of those ours?
Yeah, those both, both ours.
Okay, so we're going to get, we're going to get a new house with a higher base.
Yeah. In my understanding, the letters that were sent on Newport Ritchie, there wasn't any, any concerns or objections voiced there.
Yeah.
Open floor, motion and discussion.
Motion to approve item number seven. A discussion to adopt the interlocal agreement with Newport Ritchie.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second, any further discussion? Is that discussion or just vote? A public comment? Seeing now, put to vote, all in favor, say if I was to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, next up. Item number eight, discussion and approval of outsourcing payroll functions. I'll pass it to Mr. Coppers for introduction.
So you're not crazy. We did have a conversation about this, and you did approve staff to go forward with selecting paylocity for payroll and certain human resource functions. We began the negotiations in the contract, which if you would have told me that we would ended up where we ended up, I would have said, no way. But apparently, they, they don't necessarily believe that, one, that they, if there's an issue, the venue should be here in Florida, and two, certain things that are required to be in contracts in the state of Florida by municipalities, they didn't really appreciate having that in the contract. So we broke off negotiations. And so in doing that, we were going to just go back and, and look through, again, the, the different groups that we had received quotes for. But there was a conversation at that meeting, I recall, about ADP. And what the finance director said at the time was, well, you know, they haven't returned a phone call. So I pushed to get the finance director to get them to talk to us. And he was able to talk, and I think if you go down to, or page that, let's hold on a second. Page 92, it's the matrix that has the pricing in it. So you can kind of see the, the different comparisons of that. Based upon what ADP was able to do, it seems a little bit higher per person as it relates to the payroll, but they're also giving us four free months, which reduces that cost, and also the startup fee cost is a little bit less than what the others are as well. And so based upon that, we were recommending that we go with ADP for the payroll services as well as the certain functions that we provided through HR.
Wasn't that the reason ADP didn't want them, because they couldn't take the money from the different?
So.
There was something about, about that. The one you were looking at, that Adam was looking at, they could take the money from the different?
So, at, at the, at the time, we didn't know whether ADP could do that.
Could do that or not?
We didn't, yeah. Now, the others, you're correct, the other candidates we had couldn't do that. ADP does have some limitations to that, and they're working right now to find out if they can get around it and do that, that particular backend function that makes it easier.
That was a big issue.
Yeah, there's, there's.
I think ADP was higher.
Yeah, there was certain, certain things that even with paylocity, the finance director was still going to have to do in terms of reconciliation and some of those type of things. And we'll still have to do that same thing with ADP. But again, they're, they're looking to see if there are some things they can do to make that less of a burden in doing it.
Yeah, that was the only thing I remember sticking out, that it was a, a point, a point.
So can a chargeback model be created and be funded that way? And make the payment out of the general fund and then charge back to the respective other funds for the portion of payroll that was?
I mean, that's what you're effectively trying to do.
Yeah. You know, I, I think there, there is some complexity in what we're doing. More so than what needs to be, I'll say that. I think one of the limitations, though, in that is actually our, our enterprise software, our financial software package. I mean, that's, that's really the bigger issue here. If we had a different package, this may be a lot easier. You know, I, I have, in other cities, looked at ADP, and we didn't have some of these issues that our, our financial package has. And so it, it is more of an issue because of the, the software that we use rather than ADP, you know, the way that it integrates and moves, moves the money from one to the next. And, and that's, that's what the issue really is. It's not the services, it's our, our financial software that's the bigger issue.
You're counting and getting it into, ultimately, to the right.
Right, exactly. It's just, it's limited to how we can receive that information.
And we're doing that with journal entries today, right? So essentially.
Sadly.
Gotcha.
And so, again, some of this will disappear once you get a new software package. So I mean, that's, that's the biggest issue. Again, he was going to have to do some, some form of that with anyone you select, even, even with paylocity, there were still some things that were going to be done more manually than automatically. And again, ADP is, at least that, they're looking at ways to, to make it more of a automatic process than manual, but it still handles some of the, the other issues that we see really well, and a little bit more cost effectively than, than what we're looking at.
According to this model too, it looks like it's coming up as the lowest annual cost as well. So with their, with their benefits, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would also say that I actually asked Adam about ADP, because it, I mean, I think that's kind of the market leader, I would believe, a very robust set of tools that they have. So I think we'd be getting much better product. I, I think I'd read that paylocity, the user employee experience, maybe on their mobile phone, might be a little more snazzy than what ADP has or something that there's, but you have a lot more capability on ADP side that you could tap into.
I've been administered a couple companies that had less employees very successfully with outsourcing their payroll, and they benefited from usually, and employees were much happier, and it saved them money in the long run, absolutely.
There was one question about cost. Obviously, it's for the first year, it's much lower, is it, is this an introductory price or?
You know, I, so one of, one of the limitations that I have since our finance director wasn't able to make this meeting tonight, is I don't have that to my fingers. I thought that was the case, that there was going to be some additional reductions in costs in future years as well, but I'm not going to say that for a fact, because I'm not sure.
Okay.
For a fact, that's the case.
And we have the ability to cancel at any time, or we stuck?
Yeah. And, and I hope that we'll be able to actually negotiate a service agreement this time.
And I, I think at the end of the day, if we want to get out of that relationship, pretty much any other vendor would, it'd be easy to transfer from ADP because it's such a prevalent product out there, so I think it's a good deal.
I make a motion to approve item number eight. The approval of the outsourcing payroll function to ADP.
I second. Okay, motion second, any further discussion? Any comment? Seeing now, put to vote, all in favor, say five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? Did you put the spreadsheet together?
Did not.
Okay. Adam? Just to do the normal dig, agree to it. We can, we can drop into that. I love to razz him when I have the opportunity.
Can I take a little break? Two minutes?
Right, we, you would take, we'll take five minutes?
Yeah.
Good.
Don't take many committees long.
We'll take five, take five.
Okay. We are going to resume with item number nine. Stan Tech Professional Engineering Services Piggyback Contract. I'll pass it to Mr. Coppers for introduction.
City council has expressed interest in establishing a maintenance dredging program for the thousand waterways within the city of Port Ritchie. To support this initiative, $200,000 has been allocated from the Penny Frappasco Fund in the fiscal year 2025 budget. I recommend that the council engage Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. to conduct necessary study and design work, develop the dredging plan, and prepare and submit the required permit applications on behalf of the city. Stan Tech is currently working with Renham County on a similar project and has extensive experience with comparable effort to other Florida municipalities. Based on Stan Tech's prior work with the city of Port Ritchie, they've done a number of different projects for us. They have demonstrated a strong understanding of our needs, delivered clear and actionable information, and maintain consistent, consistent communication and follow through. On council's approval, the next step would be to hold a scopy meeting with Stan Tech to define the project parameters. This will result in the creation of a statement of work at SOW.
This will result in the creation of a statement of work at SOW identifying the specific canals and waterways to be included in the dredging program. The SOW outlined the steps required to complete the study and provide associate associated cost estimate. Once finalized, the SOW will be presented to council for review and budgetary authorization. And so you might remember when you had the conversation before, they had given us kind of a preliminary number based upon not knowing which ones we were going to be doing. Of 90,000 to 125,000. As I said, 200,000 have been appropriated in the Penny for Pasco Fund. In the motion, I would ask that you also include in the motion that the city manager and city attorney is authorized to negotiate and sign the necessary cooperative purchase agreement to effectuate. We don't have that at this point in time, but we will have it shortly. And so it'd be better to have that in there so we can get that negotiated. This will be a piggyback of the Hernando County Professional Service Engineering Services contract. I believe that was done, I don't remember now. It was in 2023 that they actually did that or 2022. And there was a number of years on that contract. So we'd be piggybacking that that particular contract.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's long overdue. Get this scoped out so we can get some of these canals cleaned up.
I'm on four. Could you clarify what piggybacking means?
Sure, so you allow let you do it.
So piggybacking is using another municipality's contract. So we get the same rate as them. It's already been negotiated and all that. So we're just basically using that same the same parameters.
And that's a proven kind, that's a proven contract that has come to fruition. And they're on the other side of it. Everybody got paid and the job got done.
Not necessarily.
So we don't know if it's a valid contract.
What happens is if this allows the city to not go out to bid, meaning request for proposals out, have companies provide their proposals to the city and go through that process. This this allows you to go to a state or other city agency, another city and make sure they went through their correct bidding process. So you look at the request for proposal they set out, the responses that are provided, look at why and why and how they picked who they picked. Then you'll have actually have the contract that they have entered into and negotiated and signed. Does it mean that it's done and everyone's paid, but there is a valid contract in place and you can piggyback off that? You can change some of the terms and conditions for yourself. It doesn't have to be exact, but it lets you avoid that that bidding process and it lets you move quicker. It's very quick. It's common, not.
I'm not against that. I just want everybody to understand that. I'm just looking at this from like a pure common sense perspective, okay? You know, I want to get as many options as possible. I don't want to just jump into one deal and say, yeah, we want what they got because we don't know what Hernando got this month.
Well, I'd just say Stan Tech has done the majority of engineering in the state of Florida by far.
Okay, well, yeah, these are things I'm wanting to learn. I haven't.
So they got great standing with every municipality they've dealt with.
And the outcome of this is we'll have a document that we can put out to bid.
Right.
What this does is it addresses the engineering and scope of what we're trying to accomplish, I believe. And then with that, that is a document we can put out to bid and we can get on a bid.
And every dredging company appreciates what Stan Tech has done. So it gives us much better choice of picking a dredging company with Stan Tech than it would with another company. That's important as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just want to say that, so, you know, the the selection of engineering firms especially is is covered under state statute. There's a special state statute on how engineering firms are to be selected. And it's not based upon pricing. It's based upon qualifications, their their work history. And generally though, in the negotiations, especially when it's going to a larger organization, they get better preferred pricing than what we would get. You know, you can liken it to police cruisers, you know. We can go out to bid for police cruisers, but we're going to buy three. You know, the different associations that do that by thousands. And so they're going to get a better price on those vehicles than what we would get. Same thing here. This is something the city has done many times on many different cases during the storm or after the storms, during the storms. We did a lot of piggybacking with contracts through Pasco County for degree removal and oversight and a number of different things. And so it is something that is done quite frequently. For a small organization, it's preferred because you can, again, utilize a lot of very expensive employees from other municipalities and counties that review these things and make recommendations and negotiate contracts that you you don't have to spend the time to do that.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Any questions? Okay, any public comment? Oh, we don't got motion now, I guess, do we?
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Stan Tech Consulting Services to conduct a necessary study and design and permitting for development of a maintenance dredging program for the city of Port Ritchie through the piggybacking of a Hernando County Professional Engineering Services. Contracted and authorized, the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate and sign the necessary cooperative purchase agreements to effectuate this approval.
Second. A motion second. And a very eloquent motion it was. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing how I prefer to vote in favor, say five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
I didn't have any to run.
He set the bar high, did he? Ashley, okay.
Very nice.
Next up, item number 10. A moment while we wait for interim city manager search. I will pass that over to Mr. Coppers for introduction.
Since the last council meeting, staff has advertised the interim city manager position and received 26 applications. You, of course, were given access to the board containing those resumes that were submitted. I have attached the spreadsheet summarizing the applicants and indicating how each meets minimum qualifications, and I'll go over that real quick in a second. And I've highlighted, Kansas, I believe, that merit further consideration by council. I recommend that the city council identify which candidates you would like to interview. And then prior to those meetings, I can conduct preliminary interviews and prepare a more detailed assessment of the select individuals to assist in your review. So going over that that very down and dirty spreadsheet I put together, in the the advertisement, there are really a couple what I think are important minimums in there, you know, one had to have a minimum of BA degree and had to have a minimum seven years' experience. I think it's progressively management type of experience in their career. We received 26, as I said. There weren't a lot that actually met the minimum required. Practically everyone, except for three, I think, met the minimum BA degree requirement. And most exceeded it, either with MBAs, MPAs, or JDs. I also put a couple other columns in there just for your understanding as you look at that. I put in there if they had Florida government experience. And then I also put whether they were a city administrator, a city manager, or a town manager. And going through it, I, again, I identified four that, to me, were were of interest. And and I don't want you to take that thought that, well, these are the only four that you should look at. You know, this process is one that you have to be comfortable with whoever you select, right? And I think that you get to know them through the interview process. A piece of paper tells you a lot, but it doesn't tell you everything. And I I can probably say that those that were involved in the last process with you, you know, probably had a thought going into an interview based upon a piece of paper, and that would probably change after you talk to them. So it's important that that, you know, you don't just look at what they've put on a piece of paper, but also how they're going to fit in with working with you and and fit in with the rest of the staff that you have. So again, don't take those that I highlighted as, you know, after. It's an imperfect science hiring employees. And you have to go in with that mindset that that you might look and see and say, this person is the perfect one. But when you start actually meeting them and talking to them, it changes and you have to have an open mind to that. That's kind of my my spiel on this. And I'll shut up now.
Because I haven't been here before, a city manager, did the department head get any input on this? Because that's important to it.
Not not at this point.
But at some point?
I think if if that's something you want to do, yeah.
I definitely think that's something we should do. The department head should have it. They should have it.
So I, did you guys not interview when we hired Matt? You guys weren't part of that at all? There was a there was a staff meetup or something where you got to talk to him. So they they were involved. And I I can tell you, I went to a couple of staff members to get their feedback and I weighed that into my decision making.
I think that's important.
Yeah, no, I I agree with that. And I I think I think going forward, we probably ought to definitely do more of that.
Similar to the way we interviewed. I think that was an excellent process, and I think everybody appreciated the outcome of how that worked.
Yep. The, and going back to to Matt's statement, so about how the importance of, and now this is not exact science. When you look at these resumes, you're trying to rank things on on what you see and any research you do. When when we went through that process, Matt was probably fourth on my list, I believe. But I can I can tell you that every interview that in that process.
You know, make God feel good.
I'm getting ready to make him feel good. So start with the, start with the, oh, and then we bring it back up. So but I will tell you that as I, and I can tell you, the first, the one that was first on my list, as soon as I talked to him in the meet and greet, he felt the vibe. So just that interaction. And then as we as we went through the interview process where we each council member interviewed each individual privately, and then we came back as a collective and with this more interview process, I can tell you, the entire process from meeting Matt, going through the interview process, he rose to the top. And so, you know, and as you guys may be aware, we we narrowed it down to two candidates and Matt was the one that won out. To to look past just words on paper, because there's real talent out there that maybe the paper doesn't shine as much or somebody. That's almost doesn't shine because obviously your resume speaks for itself. But there's other resumes out there that that first glance, like, wow. But they, you know, you meet him in person, interview him, it's not, it's a wow, it's, you know. Yeah, AI can do wonders for for folks, right?
A lot of fluff.
So and, you know, and just to further, again, I know I say this in public a lot. I I hate like crazy to lose you. And this is very tough to have to do this, but obviously, we 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 wish you well. I know you do. And I hope you look finally back on this as, as we appreciate all the help you put in. You've been instrumental in getting us where we are today, and I applaud you for that. So.
Well, one thing that he's actually done is he's raised the bar so that we know what we're looking for, you know?
Right.
Thank you.
For the bottom of my heart, and I think I speak for everybody on council and in public, you've been a great asset. So thank you. And I appreciate you doing the due diligence and kind of going through this for us and and getting us a starting point. So with that, we obviously need to pick some folks to put through a process. So maybe before we do that, we kind of talk about the process.
Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions here because initially we were looking at interim and then looking at a a country search. Did we or do we feel that we have enough information to make a permit to hire? Or is this, are we looking at an interim?
You don't know.
So I'm thinking, since we can let these guys go at will.
Right.
If they don't work out, then you're right back on plan B. We haven't contacted any search firms at this point.
No, not yet.
Well, no, we have.
Oh, that's another aspect to that.
We've reached out to three companies that do searches within within Florida or have done searches within Florida. So we 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 didn't provide insight because we weren't directed to provide that. Yeah, so I think the low was 28 and the high was 32. So it was like 28, 29, 32, I think.
And I think that's reflected from what we paid last time, 30,000, something like that.
But, you know, to come up with 26, I mean, we've got a good, a good cross section of people. You know, I I went through and there's a lot to look at.
It's possible that these could be permanent, yes.
Yes. So.
Now, just, I I wanted to get in Matt's head a little bit here because Matt's got wisdom and experience that we don't when it comes to this. So, I mean, I'm looking at the highlighted folks here. Matt, is there others that we might be missing that could be that you went through and like, did you use a scoring system or you just like put a check or next? I mean, I wonder how you, how did you go through these? Because it's a lot of information. I went through all these. My head was spinning by the time I got halfway down and I had to go back and do it again. Then I kind of forgot where I started. So what's the scoring system or how do you keep track of that?
Well, the first thing I did was I got rid of those that didn't have a BA degree. The second kind of chopping line was those that don't have any direct city, city, higher level city management or city directorship position. And then when I had that narrowed down, I actually had looked practically every one of these candidates up. I did research.
Like searched social media, searched all that stuff.
They did a lot of search. You know, I I think there are some candidates there that present really well on a piece of paper, but when you kind of look at the body of work and their experience, it may not be good fits. I'll just leave it at that. And so that's why there there are some candidates on there that have considerable experience that that I didn't think would be good fits for the city. But I I think to go back to the question about permanency, I think you you have an opportunity. And and remember that this was really very limited. We we put this out locally, really. I mean, you know, it was in, I think, the Florida League of Cities. That's where we advertise it primarily and indeed. You know, we didn't hit all the national places that you would normally do for a city manager. And so you really, you know, this pool is kind of limited.
There's still the city manager associations. Do they have a job board there?
I don't know if we put it on the FCC EMA or not. I know Florida League of Cities. I don't know if we did that or not. But, you know, normally you would be advertising this on the ICMA, its mother, you know, National League of Cities, and other groups like that. And, you know, we we advertise for an interim. And so people that that are right now employed but thinking about wanting to move, you know, they 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 want to move up or they want to move to Florida or, you know, whatever that that situation is, they're not probably going to leave their job for a possibility interim to be the permanent manager there. So you're missing that whole group of candidates that didn't apply. And so I I think I may have said this earlier to someone, you know, you may get lightning in a bottle and and the person you bring in as the interim is the right fit for you. And you'll never let it go. But the reality is that that, you know, a lot of these individuals, you know, aren't aren't working. Maybe don't want to be a permanent, you know, they just see it as an interim's position and want to move on to the next next job with that. And and I think that you do have an opportunity to recruit someone that that can, you know, fill the needs that the city has, the staff has, you have to to bring the the city into the, you know, the next phase of its development. So I would, I would say if you do an intern, don't stop, go to the next step and and get a a national search going.
I looked at all these as well. Looked at their social media, researched any articles in the cities about them and talked to Matt. Ironically, I came up with the same people he came up with, except for a couple. And then Matt came up with some hidden things about him. Thank you, Matt, that kind of took him off the list. So I kind of look at what he's looking at and see the same thing.
Before we, before we go down, I kind of like to talk about process first because that's, if it's like people, it's going to be somewhat difficult, I guess, because there's five of us and there's 26 people here and and different opinions or whatever. So but the process is the same across all the candidates, right? So so process wise, obviously, we we're not going to be able to do any interviews this week. I think best case, we could probably look at doing a special meeting on Tuesday next week, potentially, but that's kind of where my head's at. Again, Matt's not talked to any of these individuals to see, you know, we kind of think we know where they're at, but, you know, if they can't come here, one, do we? if they can't come here, one, do we, do we want to definitely have them here or are we going to allow some virtual? We could set up a Zoom for those that can't be here. If it can be our person, that'd be great if they're local. If not, we could do Zoom. I'll see for the, if it was a for a permanent, we'd, we'd have them all in, we'd fly them.
Do we know from this list, how many are local offhand? Five, three? I, I, I recognize a, a few locals, so.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh.
Maybe four or five?
Off the, off the total list?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say there's probably about 10.
Local?
At least 10, at least, well, yeah, at least 10, maybe as many as 15 local being in the state of Florida.
Okay.
So I think a three hour drive, four hour drive.
Yeah, so I would, I would think it, we could, if they, if they can be here, we prefer them to be here, right?
Would you go through all of them and do like 10 minute interviews, bring them in, 10 minutes, you're out, boom?
Well, maybe do a similar.
Possibly longer than that. Again, I mean, I, I guess if, if you can be here, be here, virtual's okay, right? Cause I don't, I don't want to spend any funds to fly people in. And if, if we did want to do that.
But it's not the same as in person, you know that. It's not.
Well, it's, it. You can wear pajamas on the Zoom call.
Well, at least the lower half. I, I, I mean, it's not the same as, as being a person, no, but it's, 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 I think it's good enough for what we're trying to do as opposed to trying to get people here.
Narrow down, yes.
Yeah. Um, and obviously if we, if we, if we did have a good warm and fuzzy after that, we could always, if somebody was virtual. And we really, we, we'd get them in here.
So this would be the first pass anyway. And then you, and then you narrow it down and then pick three.
Right. So from a time, timeline perspective, obviously the goal would be to have somebody in place with Matt for at least a week to do some turnover. It, it may be hard to do that depending on who gets selected. But let's just say that we set a special meeting for next week on Tuesday, the 20th to do all, all the interviews.
Matt can put that together on his time. It's up to these guys and him, you know?
Well, they're going to do what we, what we want. It's, this is our process. It's our responsibility to hire a city manager, hire an inter, appoint an inter. I mean, you could text, I mean, if we wanted to, we could just pick a name out and hire him right now. I mean, it's, it's, or we could put him through a, a rigorous interview process. I mean, it's, it's really up to us how we do that. Staff and, staff would take care of what we need to do. So obviously we, we need to do due diligence and so, and we need to provide some amount of time. Obviously we've got our Centennial stuff going on this weekend. So I think our best chance is either the 19th of Monday or the 20th to set up interviews. And that's providing whoever we select, that they can meet that. And hopefully with a virtual option, that would be very doable. And it gives them, you know, a week basically, a period and whatnot, so.
I think it's smarter toward the end of the week. I mean, you can, there's so many things going on in this whole.
Well, it's, we can do that too. Again, if we're, if we're trying to get something, so ideally if we had interviews on a 20th and we could make a selection on the 20th, um, we could possibly have them here for that last week that Matt's here, the 26th to the 30th. And depending on who it is, they might be able to come in the next day, right? If they had, if they don't notice period and working whatever. So I think that's, that sets us up for the best case scenario. Uh, we, we may not achieve that, but that puts us in a position where we could possibly have them here for the last week.
I'll be in Orlando, but I can do virtual.
Okay. How, how long you in Orlando for?
All week till Friday.
Okay. Um, and honestly, this would probably be, it wouldn't be just an evening. It would be depending on how many you select during the day.
Whatever it takes, right?
You want to bring them into City Hall?
Well, we would have, we could do stuff here, yeah.
Okay, like the Zoom into the meeting?
Yeah, we, for sure. So that aside, um, the, the other part of the process is, is who interviews? You know, we could all just do it together? Or we could, we could go through interviews individually and then come together?
No, I think you get the benefit of everybody answering different, asking different questions and hearing the answer.
Yeah.
I think shorter times and, and all of us together is more valuable than trying to multitask my, because I might not see some Bob Sees or vice versa. You know, and I think that bringing them in here and setting up, you know, we're probably going to know in about 10 minutes whether the right person or not. I'm just guessing.
So, so you think forego individual interviews with us? We just interview.
One with you, one with me.
Well, so it'd be, so let's say we select five people, right?
We have a five.
And that's the way we've done it before.
Yeah, and we have a panel here.
And so basically they would rotate though, and this is used 10 minutes, right? 10 minutes with each one of us, five candidates. So each one of us got a one-on-one, they rotate, rotate. And then we all get individual time with them, we can ask them individual questions. And then we come back and we have a, uh, another interview session with each.
Group.
As a group.
I think it's great.
Right. I, I think there's, I think there's some value in individual.
Yeah.
Conversations as opposed to in front of council. Well, that'd be a Zoom as well. We could, I think Matt said you could probably set up a Zoom station.
There'd be some way.
And we would rotate to that room or something. We'd figure that out, obviously. It, you know, depends on, maybe they all could be here, maybe they're all Zoom, it just depends on.
Can, can I jump in on the Zoom thing? How far ahead are we right now as far as the abilities to do Zooms? I think we should be like.
We have Zoom every meeting.
Yeah?
Yeah. So every meeting I have a Zoom.
Okay. Well, I shared, I was sharing to the Zoom, so anybody online, which I think, uh, we have one of the candidates online. Yeah, we've got, uh, at least one on.
We had a couple earlier.
Yeah, they.
Jump on, drop off.
So, and, so it's definitely. Um, so that's. What's y'all's thoughts?
I like it. You think we do it? Now, are we going to bring in 27 of them or 28 of them? Are you going to narrow this down a little further or how are we going to do it?
So overall process, I can leave it. So we'll, we'll make a selection, obviously based on some mechanism. Tuesday, okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
What time Tuesday?
Well, I guess we'll, are you, is there a timeframe you're not available?
Well, I was planning on driving up to Panama City, but you know, uh, things can change.
Okay. Would you rather push it to Monday?
I'd run during the day. I got to be somewhere at seven o'clock to make a presentation to the Sports Coach Chapter of, uh.
You're doing, you're doing the individual interviews and then the, the special meeting all in one day?
Yeah.
Correct? So it's going to, it's going to be a little bit, so. I plan on being here for at least half the day.
Get up at five every morning.
Actually it's not.
We do, we, we do have a Centennial Committee meeting on Tuesday.
No, you're not, it's going to be done.
Well, we've still been after fact, we got. But we can always cancel that and move it to five weeks. So that's not a big deal. So, I mean, I kind of, I reached a Tuesday because it's, it's a week from now. If you roll to Monday, it's a little less time.
Go, go for Tuesday. I mean, uh, it's going to be during the day, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, again, even the public portion of it could be earlier than six and we might have to wait till six to do it, so.
No, it could start at eight o'clock, right?
Yeah. So, and obviously the more during the day the staff here is easier on them too, so. Any objections to Tuesday? Okay, um, I just called special meeting real. So Tuesday it is.
You don't need a motion, right?
No, I can do it.
And he's got to make sure he can get whoever he can get on board, five.
Yeah, and we'll figure out the times or whatever for everything. And so.
Is that what we're doing, we're narrowing it down to five?
No, we, we discuss that next. So, so we got Tuesday, we're going to do some interviews.
Gotcha.
Um, and then, um, we're going to rotate individuals for some time. We'll figure it out based on how many we choose. And then, um, and then we'll come together as a group. And then, um, at that point, the goal would be to make a decision after the, the group interviews. We could, we, uh, the, the thing would be to draft, uh, would move forward with an offer. You know, something we have some time to do that. That's, that's what I said, hopefully we, over the next day or two after Tuesday, we get all that, we get accepted if we possibly have them in here. So that's, that's the best case scenario.
So we're going to have Daryl here also.
Daryl. Yeah, so.
He's good at asking questions too.
I wouldn't say that we necessarily extend department heads, individuals, but we could have departments as a group, be a station of interview, possibly.
Well, back to process, we're looking, let's say we're looking at five. Would we narrow that down, collapse that down to three and then engage the department heads or?
Um, well, let me ask, ask the department heads, do you guys, would you guys like one-on-one or would you think that just a group of you doing it would be sufficient?
I would probably prefer a group.
I think we could probably cover most of the questions and then we can ask them to have any further questions. Because then they may, as a group, come up with different questions that we might miss is why I think they should be here.
We could do like we did with the, uh, chiefs interviews. So we had a group of department directors and as we were floating everyone around in different meetings, they would meet there with them.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That sound good to you guys? There's only two of you there.
Were you okay with that? Would that happen? Would, did that work well?
It worked excellent because it gave you an opportunity to meet all of them on a different platform than out here in an open setting and get.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, so this department dir, uh, department heads, group, individual council. And then.
And then.
City manager, I think should be a station as well.
Well, he could be at the council when we, we're going to interview him and.
I think he's already done that. No, he's not talked to.
No, no, I haven't. I, I, you know, one of the things I will do once you select who it is, I will, I will do kind of a screening interview with a selection. It's just, you know, get some baseline information so you'll have that as you go into your, uh.
Do you think that would be enough for you or you want to be part of the?
I'll be here for meetings.
I'll be too, because you could be a station, right, that they would actually hit. So, so the, the idea would be you do your due diligence beforehand. Okay. I think it works out good. Okay, we figured out the times with basically how many, how many we select. So that being said, we've got at least 26 people here. We can, um, we could all write down a certain number. Let me ask this before, before that. What do you guys think the magic number is that we need to have?
For the first pass? Cause they're going to, or there's going to be multiple passes or we're going to pick one from, from.
My goal would be hopefully that we pick one Tuesday or Tuesday.
Oh, okay. You guys.
That's the best case scenario.
I think you opened it up a little bit. I think you go with 10 and you narrow that down, collapse that down quickly. Like Matt said, you got to meet these people some.
I would agree with more, with more rather than less.
Yeah, I would think more too, because I, and, 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 and I, I do respect Matt's position. I respect him as a person. He's extremely intelligent. He's been an awesome city manager. But there may be things that I see that he won't see, you know? And that's why I want to make sure we put a little more in front of me than just what Matt sees, if that makes sense, because.
Yeah, so are you saying you have, there's probably 10 you would like to?
No, I, I, hold on, hold on. I, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of where Matt is on the, the ones he's picked here right now for the reasons he's picked them. But I want him to step up a little bit further and give us five or six more that he's looked at. You know, in other words, he's got his first cross list and he went down through the list. He was like, no, 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 no. Well, we take those and get rid of those. Can you bring this up to, to eight to 10? You can't? You're there now, this is it, there's, there's no more.
So I think there's probably maybe a couple in there that, at least from my perspective.
Matt's got his feet in the ground, he's holding.
So again, I understand my, my position here with this, right? I mean, I, I recognize that, that I don't want to be the person guiding you who you want to select. Because again, these, these, there's a lot there that you have to make a decision on. Because what, what we don't want is something maybe to go a little bit astray when you have this person here and you all say, well, Matt selected him. You guys have to have skin in the game. Because, you know, there is always that point in relationships where things may not be working out as well as what you like. You have to be vested in making that person successful, even if it's a short amount of time. And in fact, probably in a short amount of time, it's worse than a long amount of time with these things, so. So I, I guess, you know, to answer, you know, again, what you're saying, you know, could I throw some more names in there? I, I could easily do that, but it wouldn't be because I felt that they would be good candidates for you. They would be to get you the number that you want.
And so my thought process is, um, we got six stations, right? Five council people, one department head group. So mathematically, if we select six candidates, it's a very. So we would, so if we had, if we did the same number of candidates as stations, so if we said select six, that would be easy to rotate through that and then we'd come back as opposed to a longer time. Does that make sense? I don't, I don't think it's necessary to open it up to 10. Um, I can tell you. I had nine that I would, that I would reach out to, but I, I know some information about some of the other ones or whatever. And I, and I ranked them within there with, I got four different colors within there. So I've, um, you know, I've, I've got ones that to the top. I don't think I need to pull in nine. I think from my perspective, five, six is a decent number. If you get, if you get too many, um, it gets, the decision gets harder.
I'm okay with five or six.
Okay, which six?
So, so if we, is there six that sound good to?
I'm good with six.
So any objections to that?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pick six.
Pick six.
Pick six, that's.
Don't go there, Dave, calm down, Dave.
Not the week of Don't Lottery. The, I, I think that, uh, we could each, this, I'm just brainstorming here. We could each write down what six we think. Again, it's public record, each individual council member write down six and sign it. And then we could look at that and try to get a consensus based on everybody's picks. Um, or we could, I mean, we could just start throwing out people and talking about them individually and debate. It might be faster to go ahead and pick six individually and then use that as a starting point. What, I, you got any ideas? You're probably better at this than I am, but.
Any of the above you said?
With Matt, it was a tally system, um, it seemed to work. But again, the paperwork would be kept, there's no, no secret ballots, um, but that kind of worked and you found that a lot of you, them.
Yeah, I would say. When we did that process, um, every one of us agreed on four. And the, the fifth one, there was a couple different ones or whatever. And so we, we came together and we made a decision on the fifth. And then one dropped out. I don't know if it, I think it was one of the ones that we, it's fifth anyway, so. So that would be my suggestion. Thoughts on that? I'm willing to.
Just print up all the names and then we'll just push it out like one, two, three, four, five, six.
You should have it in front of you.
I got the names here.
Yeah, so I, I would suggest clerk, unless there's any other ideas, pass out a sheet of paper. We each take a moment to pick six people and then we'll tally that up and see what it looks like.
Sounds good.
Give us a starting point. From a public comment perspective, should we open that up before or should we go ahead and go through our process? I mean, because I, the reason I asked it because I know one individual is here, obviously he spoke for, he wants to speak on that. So I'd probably be beneficial for him to speak beforehand, so.
I would think public comment beforehand, that everyone can hear what they said, nothing may or may not.
And that way anybody else would want to speak before we make a selection. Is that procedure wise? Is there any objections to that by opening up public comment? Okay.
So then you're going to put the top six, their six and sign it, correct?
Yeah, and we're going to have public comment before we choose. Right, right, right. Yeah, that's kind of what I think. I just want to make sure. Okay. So I'm going to open up public comment now. Um, I do have two signed up. Let me see who's first. Hunter Olson, welcome.
Thank you again, um, to Mr. Matthew Koppeler's point. Mr. Koppeler, from here on out, if that's okay, Matt?
Sure.
Perfect. As far as educational level, one of his requirements, I have a Juris Doctorate, so I want that on the record clear. I have more than seven years of management, so that's, checks that box too on the record. Also employ over 22 individuals in two different states with several multi-million dollar businesses. I am 34 years old. I encourage you to look to the future of this city and not just today. You had a lot of lovely, I feel speaking today for the future, uh, around my age group. It gives diversity and that's very important for a municipality, um, and the state level being representative in Tallahassee. You know, you have to work with this person. I would highly consider that. I know all of you. I've been to every meeting in the. I've been to every meeting in the last, I think, three, to be exact. I've been in campaigns and et cetera, boots on the ground. I've also spoke to each council member at their homes or elsewhere. I spoke with the mayor, so I want that to be clear. I respect the fire chief and the police chief. I was at the police chief's swear in, so I'm supporting. I also let the record reflect that as of earlier, maybe the change. But that I'm the only person here that has applied in writing for the interim city manager position and attending this meeting that has spoke thus far in front of the city council requesting to serve as interim city manager and ultimately city manager of the city of Port Ritchie. I believe if you want a job, you show up. Actions speak louder than words. You have more than paper resumes before you tonight. You have actual flesh and blood with the will and tenacity to serve in this position. Acceptance of applications closed last Friday, as Mr. Cobbler stated. I'm also the only applicant here to have been recommended and supported openly on the record tonight by Mr. Danny Fields, a citizen of the city of Port Ritchie. There will also be other citizens that will step forward after I finish speaking in support of me for the position. Time is of the essence. The current city manager, Mr. Matthew Cobbler's last day is May the 30th. This means that the city of Port Ritchie has only two weeks and three days left from today to select the interim city manager and for Mr. Cobbler to get the new interim city manager up to speed and trained. The quicker the city council makes this decision, the quicker the city is moving forward to continue to reach its goals in meeting the needs of its citizens with efficiency and excellence. Also would like to note that this will not cost the city a dime or a penny, anything. You all know me and the service I have done for this city. It takes three votes from city council to make this decision. So city council, I humbly ask you to hire me Hunter Dawson for city manager, interim city manager, and ultimately the city manager position. And let's continue to make the city of Port Ritchie great again. May God bless the city of Port Ritchie in Jesus's name. I humbly ask to be hired tonight or at the minimum to be interviewed.
Hi, Hunter. Next up, I have Danny Fields.
Yeah, I'd like to give my tally code.
Well, they get their own time. Make some public comments. So you have your time and theirs. Are you going to, you're going to give a longer time to them?
No, I, you, you need, well, yeah, I'll just get up and say. Okay, yeah, I already spoke earlier, so you already know what I stand about. So again, Danny Fields, 8114 Lille Kit. Yeah, the, from what I'm hearing him say here to you, he's worked with you. You already know him. That's, that's one of the keys. I know that, you know, you guys are thinking, but he's been behind, uh, different people on voting. He's been into meetings and all that. He's qualified. You guys could vet him, just like you was talking about, and, and get to personally know him and ask him some serious personal questions or group questions. And then that will be, uh, a decision then you can make with the other candidates. But for me, I know he deserves to be put on this ballot to be one of them candidates that you're going to put in of the six or whatever you're choosing tonight. I hope his name's on there. That, that's what I would suggest you would do as a citizen. Give him a, a chance to be interviewed personally as well as, uh, the group with the rest that you pick. Thank you.
Hey, Dan. That's all the signs I have. But by show of hands, anybody else that can speak? Well.
Yes, um, well, I'm just.
Name and address of her.
I'm sorry, Tina Russell, 8144 Washington Street, Port Ritchie. Yes, I'm here to support Hunter Dawson on, and as well as I'm so honored to just listen to everything and what is the needs of the city and, and this position is very important. And, you know, I'm also, I stand as, you know, a pastor, a spiritual leader, as well as a business owner of several businesses. So I understand, you know, a business mindset and what it's going to take. Obviously not on this degree or this level, but I know one thing about Hunter and meeting him first is that he's a very innovative, strategic thinker. He's somebody that immediately, um, you know, I can see that is a great listener, an active listener. And so even when I go to hire, you know, for my business, um, it's not all about the skill sets or even the experience, but are you a team player and do you listen? And we get people all the time, you know, also, you know, sending into our businesses and wanting to be hired. But I tell you what, we collaborate. I collaborate with my family and those on our team. And I just think he would be a great addition, um, to that as well as, you know, representing, you know, not only the, the city, but what you're really trying to do and having a young candidate with, you know, experience. And not only that, but values. He holds, you know, a value of God, as you know. And I tell you what, no matter what city plans y'all may have, without God, you take God out of it, which we all know. And I know you're a Christian mayor and I, I thank God for that. It's why I'm standing here today, you know? But the reality is if you take those principles and the values out and you start, you know, seeing churches closed down and things like that or men like this, you know, taken out of these prominent positions, then the city goes down too. That's just an absolute, absolute fact. It's a spiritual fact as well as, you know, a business fact on a, on a city level. And so I would like to say that, you know, as far as Hunter is concerned, obviously, you know, we know that he, um, carries, you know, um, an educational level to, to meet those minimum require, requirements. But I am proposing to you to look, you know, exactly, he actually took the words out of my mouth. He's here today and he's been here. He's been present. And I tell you what, on a business level even for me, I want to know that people really care about what we do, how they're going to represent my business, you know, and is, how they're going to represent me because my face is on it, you know? And I think he's going to do that very well. And also, you know, just, you know, making mention that, you know, the, the visionary of a young man always gives a fresh perspective, you know? That's why, um, I, I can see that he's obviously carries the skill set of operating day-to-day budgeting, overall responsibilities. But you guys are creating a movement here and this is why I'm literally here today as well and why I'm doing my part on a spiritual level, but also on a, on a business level. You know, I like to see cities revitalized and rebuilding and I think that he definitely carries that. The skill set, yes, on an educational level, but I tell you what, I wouldn't hire anybody if they didn't carry my vision, personal vision and also the character that he has and he carries. And, you know, just hearing him tonight and hearing the chaplain here, Pastor Danny, you know, it's obvious he cares. And so I just say thank you, you know, for allowing me to speak and I hope that y'all make a great selection so you can continuously move forward because time is money and money is time.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, um, Marissa Russell, 8144 Washington Street. Um, you had mentioned earlier that when you're considering candidates and when you're considering who's to be the next city manager that we, you have to look past the words on paper. And truly, you have to look at the character of the individual because it is their character that reflects and ultimately drives a person's decisions and actions. That being said, I truly do recommend Hunter Dawson for the Port Ritchie city manager. Uh, there's a scripture that reads, "Let no one despise your youth, but be an example to the believers in word and conduct and spirit and faith and impurity." That's First Timothy 4:12. And truly, I believe, uh, since the time that I've known Dawson, uh, Mr. Dawson, that he, um, has shown these qualities and these characteristics. Um, he is true to his word. He carries a very respectful, respectful and honorable and godly conduct. Um, he has a naturally positive and professional spirit. He's a man of faith and holds himself to good morals. Um, he is pure in all of his intentions and all of his actions. And when you think of very important positions like that, these are very important qualities that we need to consider, that everyone needs to consider for both as, you know, city manager, but as a manager of any kind of business. Um, and, uh, you know, knowing, uh, you know, Mr. Dawson, I have really come to appreciate how much he has supported, uh, Port Ritchie, how he has supported local ministries, how he's supported local businesses. Um, I have appreciated how he has supported me individually. Um, he carries a respect that not many people do towards me as, as a young adult. And I'm going to be honest about that. And, you know, he really, uh, does care about everyone from all ages, stages, phases, which is something that, you know, managers are to consider and to think about as a manager. So, uh, and I do, I do speak from experience. And I, uh, really appreciate, um, Mr. Dawson's knowledge and wisdom and support and truly believe that he would be an honorable and loyal city manager for Port Ritchie. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Jessica Russell, 8144 Washington Street, Port Ritchie. Um, I'm definitely in support of Hunter Dawson, uh, you know, for a Port Ritchie city manager. Um, but I speak in favor, uh, not only for the qualified skill set and abilities that he carries professionally, but I also want to highlight what we've been talking about is the godly character that he does embody. And I believe that the godly leadership is vital because it aligns with the actions and the decisions with not only the overall vision for our city, but with God's will. And someone who, who is open to the heart of God and to the heart of people that is super key to what, to the transformation that we want to see in our city and the transformation that you guys want to implement in our city. And I believe that wholeheartedly. Um, I believe that he embodies those essential qualities. And I believe that he is here to set a standard to prioritize the well-being of those that he leads and influences and to foster that growth that benefits our overall city vision and direction. I believe that he leads in his own life and that's just evident in even meeting him and knowing him for the time that I've known him. And that he does desire to make that change happen with action. So he's, it's not just mere words, but it's action. And I really love Proverbs 29 verse two because this verse connects with the impact of a leader's character to the well-being of people and suggesting that it's righteous leadership that leads to societal joy and prosperity, but it's wicked leadership that causes suffering and unrest. And I believe that among the people. So I believe that Hunter Dawson will serve and help implement the changes that we aim to have in Port Ritchie because he embodies that character and conviction and godly direction that we all, uh, need to see for the change that we want, um, in our city. So when a leader prioritizes character and humility and openness to the needs of the people and also the needs of our city, I believe that we can help create that environment of change that we want to see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, online, is there anybody online who wants to speak? I know, in case there's a candidate. We have X. Now, I think there's only one left. Okay. Okay, so that, if we want to take a few moments and each council member, uh, put your, your list of six on the paper and then sign that, we will, uh, we'll then pass it to the clerk, I guess, or? And have her total. Oh, you're trying to get it to excel? Oh, we, they're on the other council. Not too late to put your name on the list. We would even extend it. I will personally come to your house and swap them. No CMs for you. This is your real test, Ashley.
We're going to get, we're going to get four and then everybody else has got their shotgun. But you said, you said you discarded some of these ones, but along the.
Actually, we've got something. Okay, let's, uh, see what. Any more time?
We're waiting for you.
My last question. Okay. So who's done? You're done?
We already passed the man.
Okay. Wow. Okay, so, and take your, there's no rush. How long you guys need? So actually, would you get those, like, you guys list the names in order of the highest tallies and down? Six. And if you want, Ashley, I can. Say if you, if you, once you get a tally, if you want to bring them to me, I can put them in Excel. We can put it up on the screen.
Well, you can just, or call them out, can't you?
What, it might be easier to visualize them and. Not everybody's as sharp as you.
I counted on my screen. Everybody's got the screen. All you got to do is count, you know.
Do it your way.
How long is it going to take you to run them to excel?
Just trying to be prepared for whatever we need. Oh, no, it's, it's not a big deal to type minutes on. There's six people.
We, we got a list right here.
Yeah, but I figured you might want to see the scores and the public might want to see. Is here for me, David, it'll take literally two minutes. And then we'll have it.
Put me on the clock.
The youth has got a big voice. Rallying the youth. Because the youth pastors know what they need, how they think. Especially when you give them positive things and they want to engage. They'll be a hand, they'll do a lot. You, you give them a good vision. They will, they will run with it and it'll be the hands of people.
Amen.
They get stuff done. That's why I'm trying to get my church, because we're all old people, that's why I said, it's not the old people. We get the youth, like the twelve churches. They got a lot of youth faith, they'll be behind.
Amen. Yeah.
The older churches, they love them. Set in their place, you know, we're just okay. I want to get to this generation.
Amen.
It's called raising up a new generation, both Republican and Patriot leadership.
David is the second class name. Tim Day. Tim? I'm just about there. Oh, yes. Oh, please do. What happened there? Oh. Oh, there it is. What's going on here? Oh, okay. That makes sense. Yes. Just double check this. Yeah, I want to sort it. I was typing, I was trying to get ahead of her time. Good catch, though. Okay. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight candidates. And I want to sort these real quick.
It's nice having a technological advancement.
Okay.
Sometimes.
Okay. Share on the screen. Okay. So here's the candidates in order that they were ranked based on our scores. So we have Christopher Edwards with five, John Manning five, Darren Tangeman five, Andrew Butterfield four, Mike Brillhart three, Jeff Schubridge two, Michael McLaughlin two, and Tim Day one. So if we were to, if we were to take and select the top six, that would be the top six. Other than these, these two are tied. So we could take the top five and then debate these, if you, if you want to do that rationale. Or we could, we could debate other ones. I mean, we could take the top three, top four. So what's y'all's thoughts?
Want to take the top five or no kind of, is there any debate about that?
There was something on seven and eight that caused two of us to vote that way. So why wouldn't you just pull seven and the next?
Well, we get outside our, our.
Let me make comment about seven and eight. Both of them work for Reddington Shores.
That's correct. And I, I, I can give you what I know of history.
And Schubridge interviewed here one time before.
So back when we hired Matt, Schubridge reached out, he was the current Reddington Shores city manager. And he wanted to be the interim and possibly permanent. And then we went out with a search firm and so he was encouraged to apply with his, other people reached out as well. And so he did apply. When he, when we came back with a packet, I think they gave us ten people that went through their process. Do you know how many people applied for that back then? It was a lot, I think. They narrowed it down to ten. And Jeff Schubridge was one of the ten, I don't know where he was at in that mix, but he was one of the ten. And then the council took and selected five. When we went through our process, I, we, the top four were all unanimous. The fifth person was, was different. My fifth person was Jeff Schubridge at the time. The, and I can't, we went with somebody else, I can't remember if anybody else was Jeff. I will say this on Jeff, just for transparency. He came, when we announced the position, when John Duke left, he reached out to me. I don't know Jeff Schubridge, I still don't know Jeff Schubridge. He, he has kept in touch briefly. He, he reached out during the hurricanes and asked if we needed any help, he'd be happy to come down, he had some flexibility, whatever, to help out or whatever. But outside of that, I've not had long discussions with Jeff on his qualifications, I've never interviewed him. Just very short, he reached out, he was interested. He reached out again when he saw it was open this time and was interested. I will tell you that Jeff is currently city manager of Minnesota. Minnesota, I think. And he, he would not be interested in taking an interim only to be the interim. He was, he wants the full position. After Jeff Schubridge left Reddington Shores, and I think he was actually in the process of leaving when he applied for our role then. I can't remember where he went after that. But I actually suggested that we bring him in as one of the five. He got poo-pooed because I think the previous council tied him to me and they thought that was some kind of favor happening. Like, I don't know the guy. Seemed like a nice guy, but I can't, I can't say yea or nay. He does have some experience, obviously, he's been in a beat city. So I selected him again as one of my six. The, when he left, Michael McLaughlin was then took his place. And I think he's been there ever since. I don't think, he's, he's left now. So that's, that's what I know about those two, but they worked, both did work at Reddington Shores, Jeff Schubridge was there and then Mike took his place. And Jeff's in Minnesota now, I'm not sure where Mike is. But like I said, he was in, Jeff was in the mix before. And like I said, he went through the process, we paid thirty thousand dollars for and was selected in top ten. So I, I lend some credence to that, obviously. So from, from, from my perspective, I would suggest that we take the top five that we have there, because we all pretty much have a consensus around that. I'll say a couple of people didn't select Mike and one didn't select Andrew. And then pick up Jeff Schubridge would be the one that I would advocate for to interview. But I'm.
Cool with that. I'm good with that. Or do we just go with five and call it?
We can do that, too. Again, I think we got, we got six stations. It wouldn't hurt to, and I'll say if we select six, that don't mean we're going to get the six to do. So I would actually say is the next step is we've got eight here, right? Yeah.
Try to get six and then boil it down to who can show.
But obviously we pick the top six and then try to get those, if one of those can't show, we've got six slots. Go ahead, move down and Mike would be next. And then Tim would be that, to try to fill the six slots, that would be how I would.
That would be fine. But did he say that he, he wouldn't take the interim job unless he's getting the permanent job?
That's correct. He, well, he, he, he's interested in, obviously, he's at a point in his life, as more so than his wife, I think, he wouldn't want to take the risk coming down here. But I will say this as well, and this is kind of how I feel. You know, we may, we may select interim and that would be somebody we we wouldn't want to restrict this to just interim, maybe we talked about that. As we approach these people, are we going to be saying is it strictly an interim position or you will not be eligible for the, the permanent? I think if that's the case, that's a philosophy, right? The way I see it is, is we've got candidates, whoever we select as interim, we may like the person and want them to be the permanent and we want to restrict them from doing that. And I think it, you know, it depends on the person we pick, I guess. Right.
Why? Isn't that under the assumption you're not going out to headhunter and look?
Yeah.
Are we?
Well, no.
Headhunter, are we gonna go after these?
So our first, our first step is to get an interim in place. Okay, so there would even if we thought one of these would be the permanent, I think we should select them as interim basis. And then we could always hold off on the search, see how they work out. And we could always take that up later.
I like driving the car before I buy it.
Right.
I knew you would.
Yeah, seems like I've heard that phrase before. The other so that would be kind of how I, I think about it. And then let's say that we select one of these or whatever. They would all potentially could then apply for the permanent through whatever entity. And so this gives us kind of a look, gives them an opportunity to talk to us or whatever. And so I don't think there's any harm in, in leaving that open.
Not to us, but this kind of annoyed the hell out of them.
So, and let me. And let me, let me put it this way, so Jeff, for an example. Let's say that we go through the interview process and we all agree that Jeff is our guy that we want to hire. At that point, we might he might put that decision, he said, well, I'll only take it if it's permanent. And then he would be, we kept to go to the next candidate. Again, I don't know, maybe based on that, he would take the interim and roll the dice. Again, it's, this is all speculative.
Obviously, we need to find the right person for the job, but you can't, you can't string these people along and do this.
Right, and there's actually the.
Ain't a far right thing either, I mean.
Process.
Yeah, well.
We've advertised interim, right?
Yeah.
We've advertised, we haven't told them anything that's not true.
Yeah, we, we haven't said it's a, this will only be interim, it won't turn into permanent. If we, if we did that, that could have changed. I mean, it's, it's, I think probably the, for the most part, there may be a couple that only want an interim, but I think for the most part, their hope is to turn into permanent.
That said something to me that was very vital. Thank you for that, Matt. Oh, I'm sorry.
People look one way on paper, you know? But we have to cohesively just say engine working with these people. Each of us have to get in there and actually function with these people. So we're not going to know that till we get touchy feely through this interview process. And then if we open up the door to eat more for a full time, that might give us additional people. It's very important for us to pick the right person here for the seat. It, it is one of the most important things I think that we will ever do sitting in this seat right here is to get the right city manager in that seat over there. Yeah, I think one of the things that we need to make clear when we do extend an offer to anybody is is it strictly interim and you're not eligible for the permanent? Because if you have them eligible for the permanent, that limits your candidates. If we do go out for a search, they're gonna say, well, I got somebody there, he's probably gonna have upper hand, he's working with staff now. So I would suggest that if we did hire somebody at interim, that we would if we, if we were planning on taking the next step and going forward with finding the permanent, that when we make the offer, that it is the interim offer only and they not eligible for that permanent role, so that we do get.
Well, and that's.
We don't limit our pool.
Guarantee, guaranteeing yourself more work and more effort. But if we have the a slate of candidates that could meet that permanent role, I think it behooves us to move forward with an opportunity to look at these folks. We're gonna know that.
Right.
We can cut them loose in a month if it, if it is a book.
I, I think from our perspective, what we need to do is if we find somebody in this group that we think has potential to be the permanent, that we hire them as an interim and we hold off on the search and kind of see how it goes. And then we can revisit that. But if we.
I would agree.
If we find somebody that we don't think that they might be the permanent or whatever, we make the offer that it's interim only and we, you know.
And we'll see how it goes.
And let's see what they can do.
Yeah, well, yeah, if we're planning to go right, and Matt, you speak up here from your perspective. If we hire interim and then we go out the next day to bid for a permanent.
I think so.
And that, and they know that the guy that's the interim can apply. Does that?
That would be your pool.
Yeah, so let's, they're gonna say, why bother? Because this guy's, he's there doing the job, he's gonna have, I mean, naturally, they're gonna have a leg up because they're starting to learn the city and all that. So it, it's, and not that, maybe that turns out great, but if you're trying to find top quality candidates, you don't want anything interfering from them applying, they, they need to know that they have a chance at the job.
That happened back with Sossen, I must say.
Yeah, exactly.
So, and what we're seeing is, and when I kind of looked at, got the final theme here, these city manager types, they change jobs a lot.
Like used car salesmen, or like getting that all the time.
And Matt, I mean, you've been in roles, so what was the longest?
Nine years. That's where he's going by.
And you, Port Ritchie's got a long term candidate as well. Been there.
Again, I, I will say if you do a nationwide search and don't take the pool, you will find that you're gonna have a lot better selection.
Do you think any of these, in your professional opinion, could, could serve in a permanent role? Or do you think we need to potentially expand the search and try to get, you know, remember, we're a small town. Are we gonna have the desire of somebody relocating and, and coming to Florida? I think those are all good things, but are you gonna get somebody?
I think it's too early to tell.
Yeah.
Without interviewing, I just, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
No.
We just need to find six people to interview tonight, move forward the process and we can, we start talking about making a selection, that's the time to have that conversation. So I, I think we're in agreement on the top five, correct? Is there any objections to the top five? Okay. Is there any objections to roll a Jeff Schubridge into that? Or somebody rather see Michael or Tim?
And then. I'd rather see Jeff, too.
And then do we, do we replace any of those that can't show up with these other two? And then do we, do we replace any of those that can't show up with these other two?
Yeah. I would, I would say that as well. If, if for some reason one or two of those aren't able to participate or they've withdrawn or whatever, go ahead and pull in Mike and then Tim.
Yeah. Could that be okay?
So basically this list here, take the top six and the other two backups can fill the slots if, if need.
We got two backup roles.
Yeah.
Start with eight, working to nine.
Yes. That, any objections? Okay. Is there anything else we need to cover on this for now? If you want to draft a special meeting up Tuesday, um, let's, actually let's talk about the timeframe. So if we have six.
10 minutes a piece.
And we do 10 minutes a piece as an hour. And then we would have potentially an hour meeting. Into our timeframe. You want to give a little more time or?
10 minutes a piece.
How much time you think? 15, 20 minutes?
At least 15. I would say 20.
20. So two hours individual interviews. And then we get to, we could be a council and that could be potentially a half hour, an hour, depending on how, how it goes.
Are you talking about for the all together meeting?
Yeah. Well, the all together meeting, they would potentially be here or Zoom. And, um, each one would take time. We'd probably give them time to say something. We have, obviously we've already interviewed them. We could ask questions or whatever. Then we move on to the next candidate.
I see a minimum of four to five hours to do this job.
I see some of them saying it's less than a week notice.
If we get that feedback, we could always push it. But again,
They responded real quick too. I mean, this was out there, what, three weeks, two weeks? Two weeks.
Like I said, it's, you know, it is what it is.
I mean, we're going to give them the ability to Zoom if they can't do it in person. The ones that are hungry are going to be here in person and be us.
Um, what do you think, Matt? Uh, one o'clock after lunch?
Right. Lunch. If you do 20 minutes each.
It'll be two hours. And then the, the public meter, have a break between.
Forty-five minutes per candidate.
Forty-five minutes per candidate and it's a group session?
Yeah.
Oh, you think they need that long?
What you said, a half hour.
No, I said to beat the public.
Yeah.
Be about an hour or so. I mean, I, I figured we'd probably spend 10, 15 minutes a candidate. We, if you've got a better idea, let me know. But we, we could, if, so if we did 20 minutes per candidate in the group setting, that puts it four hours. So that puts it five o'clock. We, I can't imagine going past six. Like I said, we could be, could get out earlier.
I, I think your group session, there were about 20 minutes for, was it right? You guys, for your interview process or the group part, I think it was 20 minutes, about 10 minutes.
Yeah.
I think it was, at that point was more of like, hey, I want you to hear what you told me, you know?
Yeah.
You guys were kind of, they were focused.
Do you want to start at noon?
We could do that.
Start at noon. Now we can eat lunch before noon and then top it and go.
No.
Well, you speak, do, do we?
Hold on a second. Actually, I have something.
I think you, I think you should start earlier in the morning to give yourself some flexibility and not try to push it.
Well, I think about, can't say one to come up that day. So don't have to come up five, four or what, know where they're at. Gives them
Yeah. I mean, not 8:00 AM, obviously. I would say earlier than noon for sure.
Start at, start at 10:00. And if things get a little funny, you've got to take a break to go eat for, you do a 30 minute break.
There's gonna, there's gonna be bleed over because even when we were doing the individual interviews when Mr. Troppler was here, there was bleed over because I was trying to move everybody around. And now that you have the department heads in one of those sessions, we try to stick to it. But sometimes there's a little bit of bleed over. So trying to give yourself a little bit of time and a buffer between the individuals and your public meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking that if you, if you start at 10:00 and we go four or five hours, you know, people won't make lunch around noon. I just think if we start after lunch, your belly's full, you've done anything and it's heads down, you get it done.
I think eat brunch that day.
You could do that too. Then just go right to the, that's right.
She's probably wise on that. I just in case we get, you know, deep in the weeds. The possibility we could be done by two or three instead of being here until five or six.
Yeah. But you still got to have a public meeting too, right? So
And public, yes, true. They get later, the better for that.
Let me, let me just throw this out. You're advocating for each of us to have an individual meeting, individual meeting with each of those candidates. Why? I mean, you just covered plowing the same field again. We could do it all as a, as a group and have a group meeting.
I think so too.
Well, so there's, it's always nice to have, I mean, you could have a one-on-one with somebody be different than they get up front of a panel.
I, I agree. We have to.
It's, it's, it's a different dynamic. So it's good to see. So that you bring them in, they, they tell them a little bit of that set themselves and, and give them opportunity to ask any questions. It's off the cuff. It's just a
Right. But if we're going to be firing questions at them. If we're going to be firing questions at them, you run it to 30 minutes.
Well, the, the idea is you wouldn't be firing a whole lot of questions during the public session.
I'm not talking the public. I'm talking the panel session.
That's the public session.
Public stew.
The panel session is the public session.
Okay.
Same thing. It's a public meeting.
Is public going to be asking questions as well? No.
Do you have a comment on that? Or I don't think you have to, right?
No.
And the other question was, is there's no, there's no reason to have to have a certain timeframe for that.
Exactly. Be a two day event.
All you have to do for the public meeting, you have to advertise the start time and you can't start before that.
Right.
That's the only, and you know, notice people have, be able to come in here, you know, minutes have to be taken.
Do you have a public meeting for that?
Yes. Cause you have your meeting to talk about it.
We make a decision. And so once we, once we make a decision, I have to open a public comment. Or what?
Didn't last.
Before I make it.
I think you do.
No?
It's your hiring decision.
Yeah.
You are making a hiring decision per charter. It's your, it's your decision. Yeah.
Making a two day event. Our, all decisions that we make here are decisions, but publics.
If you open to public comment then, I don't think you have to for that, but you can if you'd like.
You didn't last.
Bob's like, no, no.
They can sit here and, and listen.
Okay. I mean, I'm okay with that. So, but it's still a public. They could listen and
Yeah.
So.
Can't shut the doors, lock them.
So it's a, it's a, it's a meeting and in, in that meeting, we make a decision potentially for the, the choice. So.
I hope so.
But I don't envision that, that, uh, that public session being all that long.
We can narrow it down to
You can make it long if you want. You could ask all kinds of questions over and over and over again, but hopefully you've vetted all that out during your private time. And it's just some
All right. The private time is not in public view, right?
No.
That's correct.
You one-on-one with one candidate.
We couldn't do it for sunshine law, two of us in the same room.
No, I get that.
But you could talk to that.
That's why I'm suggesting the other. I think, I think to have all of our comments, and I'm going to bring, bring my list of questions, just like we did on the last one. I thought that worked fine. Uh, it's just going to lengthen the process and, you know, cause he's not going to know what my questions are or your questions are.
So could I commandeer maybe someone's office if I'm doing Zoom one-on-one?
Definitely. Cause you're going to be going.
Yeah.
So are you, are you, David, you advocating for no public meeting?
No. I was advocating for no one-on-ones and do a panel interview like we did with Frank.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'll be honest with you. I'd rather interview individually as well.
I would too. Okay.
I mean, you should, I mean,
You don't have to.
You don't.
I don't have to.
You don't have to, but I would encourage you to do that.
I'm going to do mine in
Because when you, at the end of the day, when you work.
I'm going to put them in the public.
Okay. Well, that's important, but
I think that's important.
Well, when you work with them.
Yeah.
You're going to be working with them individually.
One-on-one. That's true.
So
I know. I kind of agree with Dave on this one.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Now, let me, you, you, you could hold your interview however you want. You could just get to know him. Just, you don't have to ask questions. Take the one-on-one time to a message and just talk. Tell it about yourself. Tell me about your life.
Have like an open meeting here. You walk around the tables, talking in the public like we did.
No.
We're not going to do that?
We're going to have separate sections, right?
No, I'm talking about like we did when Matt interviewed.
We're not, we're not doing a whole day. I mean, if you guys want to do that, we can do that.
I think, I think you get more out of that than you do sitting on with, with a guy one-on-one.
You got to keep in mind, this is an interim city manager trying to get this done very, very quickly. It's a, they literally could be here for six months.
I'm ready to throw the dart now.
Huh?
Well, we're not, so.
That's it.
You can't see the dartboard. That's the problem.
I will entertain a motion for whatever and we can vote.
Basically.
I mean, Can we limit this one-on-one sessions to maybe five minutes or 10 minutes or something like that?
If we do 15, I think you need more than
What?
I think 15 is righted, don't you?
15 minutes goes fast.
I think it Yeah, but you got five of us. That's 30, that's a few hours. I don't know. That, I mean.
Five times 15 or
15 minutes.
You don't have to use though.
You don't know how to talk to people.
Okay.
An hour and a half. We're hiring a city manager.
If I ask, if I ask, if I or anybody asks a question, you got to give them time to answer and they might take a minute or two to answer. I mean, we give three minutes to comment, right? And a lot of people run right up against that.
Eric, if you want 15 minutes, that's fine. Rest of us will take five or 10, but that's okay.
Well,
We'd like to outline the question and, and you do have an offer.
Taking, taking, giving you 15 minutes. Take it.
Oh.
He may not use it, but you have 15 minutes.
Okay. So is there objections to 15 minutes?
Don't get your panties in.
And you could, you could take two minutes and say, hey, nice to meet you.
Right. Exactly.
Uh, I'm going to go have coffee. You don't have to. It's your time.
Right. Right.
So, okay.
So let's set
No objection to 15 minutes.
Let's set an agenda. What, what's going to happen when? Start at eight o'clock in the morning because it's going to be taken all day.
No, it's not. We're going to start at 10:00 and we're going to get this thing over in about four hours.
Oh, by three, I imagine.
Okay.
And we, and there's, there's not going to be a break.
Yeah. Eat your, eat your brunch.
I don't like that. That's why I want to start at one o'clock.
Well, after you want to
Or noon, we're not going to eat lunch before
All of us that talked for five minutes are having lunch. Rest of us are going to go eat.
Eric's on a clock. Time to go to Hooters.
We're going to have like an extra hour in there somehow.
The unfortunate, the unfortunate thing, the unfortunate thing about being a mayor is I can't bring a motion. So you guys do whatever you want.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we start at 10:00 and we go until it finishes. We think it's going to be around three based on Bob said. And, uh, we do inter- individual interviews, 15 minute schedules and we'll get, actually keep us straight on the, how it goes around. And then we'll do a group, which is the public one, right? And so a web group session, that group session could run anywhere from, what do you think? 45 minutes to an hour?
What you do need for that is a time.
We have to advertise.
We got to do all five of them.
Why don't, six of them? We, the public, the public meeting, well, after we, if we decide
It'll take long.
If you have a second, we do on this, this motion here. Then the next thing we'll find is we'll, we'll calculate that time on the 15 minutes and see about where it'd be. We'll add some transition time and then we'll put a break in between and we'll have a public meeting.
Okay.
So
Chris, articulate your motion.
I, I can, I can restate it. I, I can restate it for you. So
Okay.
15 minute intervals rotation starting at 10:00. That's pretty much it.
A second.
Okay. Motion a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Say, and put a vote on favor, signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Cause I feel like I'm almost going to be a player here. Uh, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay. So 15 minutes per candidate is hour and a half, right?
Eight minutes.
Yeah. Hour and a half.
Six, 15 minutes per candidate is hour and a half.
Okay. So
You have to have time in between.
If we have time in between, so let's just say two hours.
Yeah. And then two hours.
And then we'll take it, we'll take a, let's see, that, that put us at, uh, that puts us at noon.
At noon.
We'll break for lunch.
Break for one hour for lunch.
Now, now I'd, I'd break for two hours and come back at two.
No. Why don't we break for an hour, have it here? We can socialize and talk to them.
By the time you leave city hall, go get something to eat and come back.
Across the street.
Uh huh. And but you need more than an hour. Hour and a half is fine. But I mean, two o'clock for a public meeting and then we, I mean, we try, had to hear, no, there are four. You don't have to eat lunch. You can go take a nap.
Would it, would it be beneficial to have
The problem is, is if you, if you make it too short and people don't get back, then you're holding presses.
I'm good with that.
Didn't we just vote and just make
We already did. Thank you. So I want to, so I don't need this. I will, by consensus, you wanted it two o'clock for the public meeting? The only motion I can call special meeting without any of y'all.
All right.
So I'll just, I'll just be in facilitator.
The only thing you can do with that.
The only thing I could do and by golly, we're going to do it. Two o'clock.
That's all you got. That's all you got is special meetings.
Hopefully somebody shows up.
Well, you're
I tell you who's going to show up.
Didn't we change the charter that, uh, you got to have excuse assets?
You gotta, you gotta have
Feel free.
You gotta have a quorum to have a special meeting.
That's right. All right. Anything else on city manager stuff? You know, tough crowd.
So 10 to two.
I've quite done you.
Twelve, two to four. We're done, right?
Right. More than likely. And that's plenty of time to bleed over if we need it. Okay. Next up is old business. Is there any old business?
Well, there's some stuff I wanted to discuss before the meeting started to get that up between the right on
That, that's what this time is for. We moved it to the end of the agenda. So people don't have to wait on
It's not necessarily old business.
No, no, this, no. Next is comments from the general, so this is old business. And then we're going to do comments from, and then you can talk about whatever you want.
Well, there's three things. I want to make a brief because we have staff here and everybody wants to go home. Uh, but there's been, uh, issues that come up. A lot of people been talking about newspapers or articles and things about changing the government of the city, uh, to a strong mayor city. And, um, I've looked at a lot of this in a lot of small towns like us, and we're a small town, which is a problem with that. A big problem with that is they've changed into a manager, city manager, council to run the city. And they're getting away from the mayor of a strong city because of obvious problems when that happens. Uh, I'm, have not, for, got the reason I come up here and, and decided to sit in this seat. And the people of the city elected me, me to represent them, not myself. And, uh, I definitely didn't do it for the money. I did it because I wanted to see this city get straightened out. We've worked hard together to get a lot of good identity with our neighbors of the county. Our neighboring municipalities are seeing us in a different way and we're starting to work with us. We've worked hard, uh, to get funding, to get things done. And we've been moving the city in a positive direction. I've been very proud to work with these people to do that. If you decide to make this a strong mayor city, um, four votes, you can have someone sit in that chair right there and start doing things that you don't like. And he'll say tough and you're not going to get rid of him. And he'll fire him and puts his own police team in place if you don't like it. You'll get his own attorney. You won't have the city manager. Because he's the mayor, you'll have an administrator following his agenda, you're not gonna get a quality administrator, cause they don't wanna deal with the politics of a small town. So I strongly oppose that. And when that happens also, we have a forty million dollar grant coming for a water plant. You could jeopardize that. You don't believe me, do your own research. That's why these cities have changed. And I will knock on everybody's door and protest that if this, someone decides to change the city, city's government, I'm all for improvement, I'm all for charters. But the charter will get wiped out and changed if it comes to a strong mayor city. So I'm urging citizens to pay attention to this.
Yes.
And don't jeopardize what we've worked hard for to get done now. I've managed three companies, I've owned three businesses, I've managed several over the years, I've hired and fired people. And fifty years of managing people. My mom's business, my dad's business, and my wife and I built two from the ground up and sold them. And I'm not qualified to be a city manager. I don't think anybody up here is qualified, because the great, great mayor, we've got good council people, but you can't be a mayor and a city manager effectively for what we need to get this city to move forward. So I strongly oppose that for a lot of various reasons, I don't wanna jeopardize what we've worked hard for and lose our reputation with our neighbors. St. Pete's a big city, they've got administrators. And they got a lot more voters paying attention. So it may work there in the big cities, but in a small city where you got two hundred to four hundred people voting, four votes can turn this city right upside down so fast, and nothing you can do about it. And you won't have quality people sitting here, cause why? We make motions, he'll get overruled by the mayor, he'll change that charter where he controls that. No, thank you, I don't wanna have anything to do with that, so that's all I got to say about that. Second. I think as a staff, every night we have these meetings. And I've looked, a lot of municipalities do have limits on their council meetings. And I appreciate their time of being here, but they have families, they gotta get up and go to work the next morning. I don't mind sitting here till midnight, I'm retired, but some of these people don't wanna do that, and I appreciate that. And I wanna make a motion tonight to limit our meetings to nine P M. If we decide that we have a critical issue that we need to address with a quorum, of course, we can vote to extend that meeting for ten or twenty minutes. So we can finish that agenda. But nine o'clock is more, most of them are two, two hours. We're doing a lot of things, we've got a lot of things to work on. Nine o'clock is plenty of time to get it done, if you have issues you wanna work on. See Frank, see Gary, talk to Sal, meet Daryl, see what's going on, they'll tell you what's going on with the city, and bring it to the ma- uh, lawyer, bring it to the city manager, address that. He'll talk to us, see what we think he may, we'll see what we put on agenda, people who come in and talk, I urge citizens, please to come and speak. That's how we find out, that's how we see what's ticking out in the city, and that's how we make our decisions. And I'm here for them, I'm here for these guys, they need to go home, nine o'clock is it. So I make a motion to end the meetings at nine o'clock.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, Ben, I think if we stay focused, we can do that.
Okay, I have a motion a second, is there any further discussion?
There is further discussion. I mean, we don't have to serve on this, on this board. You know, we don't have to, I, and I'm a new guy here, but I've served on many boards, and it takes time, especially in a sunshine state, for us to get the things on the table, and talk about it, get them out of the way. You know, I don't think we should be looking at, and trust me, I've got kids that have grown out of the house now, so I'm not sitting there having to run up and fight kids, some of them do. But this is important, this takes time, it takes a lot of hash now, there's a reason why there's individuals who have run their own companies like Bob, like me. And, and there's people like Dave who have got incredible backgrounds, what he does, the, 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 uh, you know, Lisa's background here, and your background, these are all really intently, uh, smart people in their own little realms, it takes time, we can't just come in with an agenda and start rubber stamping that thing and hit the road, this community requires more than that. So I would disagree greatly with what you're saying on that, respect what you're saying about the strong mayor thing, Bob, I'm not trying to push a strong mayor thing on anybody. I can tell you right now, what I'm trying to do is get us to think, that's all I want us to do, I want us to think outside of the box.
Well, I agree with people if they, they think that way, instead of thinking what they can do, think of what we can do, because you get a lot more accomplished, and we are thinking for the citizens and their money.
I agree a hundred percent with what you said.
The citizens' money, and they're very interested in what's going on with it, of course, that's why we have these meetings, but if you have things, are things urgent, talk to the city manager and lawyer outside these meetings, talk to them, talk, I mean, you worried about things, talk to the chief, talk to Gary, like I said, Sal will help you with a lot of things. Get the city man, put it on the agenda or bring it into discussion, that way it's, it's narrowed down, there's no reason to keep Ashley and these guys here till midnight, is this, there's no reason to do it. On nine o'clock, I said, you can do a lot of discussions between six and nine and get a lot of agendas done.
We haven't been here since midnight, have we?
No.
We've been to one meeting, we're here till what time today, ten o'clock?
Eleven, I think.
We, we've been here ten, eleven o'clock, and it's no need.
That's a rare, that's a rare occurrence.
Right, yeah, a lot of times it's eight o'clock.
Yeah, so, um.
There's no reason why we can't put an agenda together and work within that timeframe, if you set fifteen minutes for each topic, move forward, cut it off, we can move forward.
We got a lot of time to discuss things, and please, bring things to the table, we can discuss them, we've got plenty of time.
So.
A lot of them are two hours, like I said, a lot of them, bigger than ours are two hours.
So, the, the comments I have on that, obviously, I'd like to get out of here as quick as anybody else, right? Um, we, we don't make a lot of money, um, it takes, you know, we, matter of fact, we've got significant time invested even before the meeting is here, right? So the last thing we, we wanna do is to prolong that. And that being said, I think a lot of times, maybe some of this stuff, uh, goes on because maybe due diligence upfront was not done, uh, maybe staff particularly city manager wasn't reached out to, and so there's, you have to ask more questions and have more dialogue within the meeting, um, whatever the case. Now, what I will say is, is that we represent the community, and the community has business to do. And they expect us up here to do the business, and I will do, I'll be the first to tell you, if I, if I'm here till six o'clock in the morning, because we need to be here discussing business, I'm gonna be here six o'clock in the morning. Uh, now, we can always, we can always find a point where we can decide to table the rest of the agenda and we can call that. But I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be imposed on a, on a finite time, because a lot of times, we have important stuff like tonight to discuss. And we didn't have any presentations from engineering firms or whatever, I mean, there's, the agenda, I know Matt tries to put an agenda together that, that, uh, fits within probably two, three hour timeframe. But again, sometimes we gotta have difficult discussions, we gotta make difficult decisions, and that takes time. And with Florida sunshine law, we don't have the luxury to reach out and talk about things beforehand.
Well, we have a city manager and attorney.
Right, but again.
It has departments to do all that.
And again, the more time that we engage city managers, less time he's able to do his job, and, and, and I, and I, and I've engaged with him a lot.
No, but you just, you just mentioned it, we've spent a lot of time vetting these issues before we show up in this room.
Should have, correct.
Oh, should have, that's a must, if you're not doing it, you shouldn't be sitting here.
That's correct.
Simple as that.
I talk to Matt, and I make decisions based on Matt, and all, if it's, it comes to a department head, like I know, go talk to Daryl about it, and then I'll, I'm right, I know what, I know what to do. I read it, I do my research before we get in here.
Bob, I'm a little confused, just help me, I'm trying to understand this, are we supposed to be going to apartment heads or going to the city manager?
City manager.
No.
So, no, see, we're not supposed to be going to department head, you're telling me to go work these things out with the, the police chief and, 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 and with the fire chief. I can't, I'm not even supposed to be going over there and say, hey, what you guys doing over there, what about that car there, am I supposed to do that?
You can sit down with Sal and Matt and Daryl, go over to the water system, and what needs to be done.
And also, city manager, if you're a big city manager and you, you wanna have a conversation with the department head.
Right.
It's always best for him to be there, now, some city managers don't even allow that at all, but it's really up to the city manager, but the charter prevents you from interfering with, with them staff.
I thought I know a mayor that got called out on that issue.
Called out on what?
Going directly to departments.
Who?
You.
I was called out on it, but.
Yes.
But, but it was not true.
But, no, but the point is, is that is not allowed.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
When I first got here, Sal took me, me, Sammy and Daryl and all the guys at the waterworks to show me the water plant.
That was at his request.
Okay.
Which is cool.
Exactly.
We did that too, I did that.
I still wanna do that, just saying that.
It's, I told you, it's, they should, it's, it's good.
So I, I, this is why.
Discuss some policies while all these guys know, discuss it with the manager.
Okay, so this is how we go down those rabbit holes and we end up.
Been an hour.
So, I've got a motion and a second on the table, we've had some discussion around it, um, the, just, just to clarify that we go to city manager, and if there's staff obviously involved in that, then that's something he's gonna coordinate.
Let us know.
Um, but by charter, we're not allowed to just go directly to department heads. And, and going further, that's, I think, why Chris brought up the strong mayor, I don't think what we need to, to worry about is, um, what form of government we're gonna end up in. We can have a conversation to make some tweaks to our existing form of government, there's all kind of variations within there, it's worth a conversation, that's all he's asking for.
And, and, and I'm all for that.
And that's, that's kind of a wrap, so, so don't take that article that you saw on Suncoast News and read into it, because there's a lot of articles going on Suncoast News that try to.
Upset.
Right, well, at the end of the day, the people would be the ones to decide that, not us.
That's right.
So if, if, if in fact we came down and we made that.
Where are all these?
Determination that we wanted to tweak it, it goes to people, and if they agree, it gets tweaked, if they don't, it's squashed, so, nothing to worry about.
But, okay.
But to your point, wouldn't a charter change require a, a vote?
Yes, that's right.
Uh, outside of this group.
Right.
It, we'd have to go to the.
We would have to pass it by ordinance, two readings, and then it would go to a vote.
Maybe during an election.
Yeah, it would be a regular like, or.
During an election cycle.
So if we were ever to get any changes, the people would be the ones that make those changes, not us, we would just get it on the ballot.
Well, I'm saying, you could get someone come in here and want, with a whole lot of money and advertise and promote this and convince four people.
In our, in our democracy, if, if that's what the people vote for, that's what the people get.
They would get it, yep.
Okay, so that's, that's.
The talent and why I wouldn't agree with is all I did.
Have a vote just like I and everybody else.
That's right.
So I.
I got one vote.
Okay, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna go down that path, that's for later date, any further discussion on the timeframe? Any public comment? See, man, I put it to a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries, you, you as yes?
I'm not sure what the. I got lost, I got lost in what, what was the nine hours?
Okay, so the motion on the floor was to limit the meeting to nine o'clock, no, well, six to nine, so three hours.
Change that, though.
Yes. So I would be aye.
Okay, so motion carries.
That's gonna happen, I recommend we do a resolution, cause you do need language that says that's now moving forward, I mean, the, the code already says you start at six.
Six.
Resolution would. Let me, we need to put, we need to put it in writing, I need to determine which way's the best way of resolution or ordinance, but you need to put in there that you're gonna end at nine, right? But there needs to be language that lets you extend it.
Right.
Because there are gonna be times you're gonna have to extend it, um, and that needs to be clarified, so I will, I will bring you back something.
So. The motion was to.
Six to nine.
Six to nine, and that's to draft the resolution.
Right, like, we have a special evening and I think it extended.
We need language to do that, so.
Right, right, yeah, all right, talk to Nancy about it.
I'd like.
Procedure.
Tonight's a special meeting, there's a CRA that comes right after this one, so it's, that's kind of a.
Uh, I know that.
Yeah, the CRA is separate, so this must be the, the council meeting you're talking about, the CRA is gonna be noted separately and that'll be separate.
If the, if the manager puts together an agenda that, you know, that's gonna be courted at eight, eight, eight o'clock, which a lot of them are, and then the CRA is another hour or whatever. But it could extend till ten o'clock on those nights.
An example of this is you, you are going to have sometime, maybe if your agenda's small, you may have something on the agenda that brings out a lot of public comment.
Right.
You're not gonna say it's nine o'clock, sorry, stop talking, you're gonna wanna extend it, so you need language in your policy.
Well, then we'd have to vote for that.
I'll take care of it.
Any other old business?
One other thing that I wanted to cover is, um, simple, I just, first I wanna say, Danny, we do appreciate your blessing before our, our meetings. I'd like for prayers to continue, I'd just like to limit it to three minutes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to limit, uh, our our meeting bit, uh, session, our prayers to three minutes. That's it.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay, motion a second, any further discussion? Any public comment?
Two minutes is good.
Okay, enough time for prayer, yeah?
Oh, I pray usually quicker.
Yeah. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing that I put it to a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So put the clock on, thirty minutes for the prayer. Uh, again, it's not been a problem, so, but. Bob's fired up about it, so we'll get it done.
Not really fired up.
Any other old business?
Nope.
Okay.
Well.
Hey, you're still on the floor if you want.
There's, uh, talking about the speed bumps and Ajax.
That's old business.
It is old business. Out of the, I mean, we're talking about maybe next month?
Um, I believe there is coming at the next meeting, the closeout of the, uh.
Safety program?
Yeah, the Safe Use For All program, because you'll need to adopt something with them, I'm not sure exactly what the language is yet. But, um, then shortly after that, I think we'd be able to move forward.
And the golf cart crossing about the same time, maybe a little later?
Um, that, that's still in the state review process. We had, we had asked about that, I think, last week, early for, uh, the old business. We're told that it's still, still being considered.
I got new battery with my golf cart that's anxious, so.
Okay. Anything else? Old business, anybody else?
No, business.
Old business? Okay, cause old business, comments from the mayor city council, I'll start to my left with, uh, vice mayor, mayor.
I just want to, to make aware to everybody that this past, uh, May fourth through the tenth is National Small Business Week. I just wanna make aware, uh, to everybody, this past May fourth through the tenth is National Small Business Week. And as a small business person who, um, has started from scratch, like Bob mentioned earlier, has family businesses and stuff, small business is what makes America grow. It really does, it makes our towns grow with the right small businesses, so I really think our focus should be to direct the new city manager to simplify the process for what it takes to come into this community and open up a business. I, I personally bought a building over here on nineteen a year ago. A year ago. That's just unacceptable in any world, and it wasn't like I was like, oh, I don't have any money, I was trying to get it done, I couldn't get it done. So we were not friendly enough in that environment to a business coming into this community here. Had, had I done it, you know, the alternative way, which is like cardboard up the windows and, you know, tile the floors and throw us paint on the wall and hit the road, that'd be one thing, but I wanted a nice place in our community, I wanted to improve the community. And it seemed like I got punished for that, so I don't think, you know, doing a little bit of research, and I do, you know, how do you entice small businesses to come into your community? You cut red tape, you simplify the process, you give them tax benefits for coming in and starting to spend money and deploy people and get that whole thing, we need to do that right here. This community needs that badly, so I really hope as a council, you know?
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, if we need to do it in three hours, Bob, so be it, man, let's roll, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I'm, yeah.
Talk to Matt.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just don't want to continue the path that I just went through, the experience I went through, and I really think in my whole heart, I think the Lord let me go through it because I was gonna be here and I'd be like, we don't wanna do that anymore. We gotta simplify this process, and I'm not saying throw away all the rules for the new city manager or for us, I'm just saying we need to, we need to court them, we need to get them in here, good businesses, we need to tell them, hey, we're behind you, we want you here, thank you for looking at our city, those kind of things. Um, and that's all I have to say, and now, one other thing. I wanna clarify clearly, okay, my, my goal was not to come in here and ruffle the feathers everybody in this town. It wasn't to come in here and make somebody feel like, oh, he's coming in trying to throw his weight around, I didn't wanna do that at all. All I wanted to do is I want us to think outside of the box, what I don't want us to do is come in here like bobbleheads, and no disrespect, say this, say, sure, whatever they say, yeah, we're good, you know, and then we all leave as fast as we can. We're not doing the citizens any favors by doing that, we're supposed to come in here, we're supposed to actually disagree on stuff, we're supposed to throw stuff out there and say, well, I don't like the way that sounds at all, that's, we're supposed to vet it right here and come up with a solution that actually fits our community, so they, they voted us in to do that for change, so, that's all I have to say, thank you all, it's my second meeting.
That being said.
Yes, sir.
You have valuable information that you could talk to the city manager about the agendas coming up and insert your ideas into those.
Okay.
And that would be valuable, and we can toss those around and, and, uh, make things, make a difference.
He told me he gave us two weeks notice.
He can't make a motion, and he's just the mayor, so, don't let that bother you.
We spent two hours together, he told me, I'm outta here, I'm like, what, where are you going?
Put me on that, man. So.
But I'm thankful for you guys and thankful I get to start with you, I never really mean that, and I look forward to it.
Appreciate you too, Chris.
Raise your, I'm counsel. Uh, I include you too, well, raise your hand if you don't think we should be business friendly. Don't think, don't think we should be business friendly, raise your hand. Unanimous, we wanna be business friendly, so, to, to add to what you've said. We need to find the things that make us not business friendly.
Like Chris said, we need to.
One of the things that we're doing now, we're going through the sign code, because that's a business thing, and so that's, so unfortunately, those things take time, but staff has to act on what the norms are today. So I think we, we all in agreement, obviously, that we wanna be business friendly, now we just gotta go through the painstaking process of making those changes, so we need to bring those things up to council, get them on the agenda, make the changes, so that we are business friendly on the code side.
One thing, I was wondering if, uh, we are gonna be making decisions on getting digital signs over on the waterfront like the rest of the city.
By codes and plans only now, they, they talked about today, and.
You'll be seeing it shortly, it's gonna go back to playing, so one more time, um, the official.
It seems so simple.
And there's a, there's a lot of words in that code, a lot of words, a lot of questions.
Well, I know how to write, I know read and write, Dave, I can read and write.
But it should, it should be, I'm not sure when the next P and Z meeting is, but it'll be, you'll get.
Next month.
So you, you'll get something shortly after.
Maybe they need to beat more of them as well, you know?
I think there's an issue with getting them together more often.
Maybe make there's meeting six hours minimum, right? It's good. Councilman Burke. It's good. Counselor Burke.
Hey, there's no problem with doing business. The problem, which I agree with, is doing business and then going around it and around it and around it and around it. And I think we can be more focused and we can do things quicker. It doesn't mean that we don't take care of what needs taking care of. It just means we stick to our agenda and then don't talk about the same thing fifteen times, which happens.
I have ideas. Unfortunately, I can't discuss them with Chris. Intermanager. Well, briefly, he's going to be gone, but yeah.
That's all I got to say. We're good.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Counselor Mueller.
Hey, yeah, I'll, I'll keep it to one page. Too bad we can't enact that now.
All right, put me on a three minute clock. Three minute clock.
Sir, it's nine fifty.
We ought to, we ought to have our stuff on a three minute clock. Anyway.
Eight months ago, we had a big flood here, and we elected to waive permit fees, parking issues, those kinds of things. We're coming to the end of that, and I believe we extended it through the end of May. My thought was is, is this the time that we need to move forward and notify folks to say, hey, you know what? We're coming up on the, we're coming up on these eight month window here. Is it something that we need to say, hey, we're going to start enforcing things again? We're going to start charging for permits because time has been allotted. They've come in, not come in. If they haven't, then anyway.
So we, our current expiration, Nancy, on that extension policy is.
Whatever ninety days was from when you.
Was it ninety or sixty?
Uh, maybe the sixty, I don't know.
So at the end of that, it terminates.
Exactly, but what I'm saying is, should we start making people aware? That's for permits that we, we did, but what about, you know, the parking issues? Stuff, trailers and stuff in the, you know, stuff going on, trash in the yard. I mean, at some point in time, we need to put people on notice that, hey, we're, you know, we're out of this period. You need to make sure this is a priority and get it, get it dealt with.
Make sure that's, that's, what's, are we within thirty days? Within thirty days, send out a, put a message on the website and send out a.
Message on the website.
To let them know that that's coming to an end, and then maybe ten days out.
Sixty days.
It was sixty days.
It was sixty days. I don't remember the date you made that decision, but you extended it for sixty days.
But it, but it's approaching. And my thought was is, can our code enforcement guy put a tag on a trailer and say, hey, this is a reminder. This is going to be expiring in so many days. We've added more places for people to park things in the city. There's been two lots, storage lots open up. There's opportunity there for them to move things around, anyway. Also, I'm still having problems trying to find the department reports. I would have expected those today, but they're not on, they weren't attached.
Yeah, they were.
Were they?
Yeah, they're in the packet on the, on the drive.
Okay, anyway. I can't find them on the website.
Oh, now the web, they're probably scattered the website. This.
Well, the point is, is they don't need to be scattered. They need to be organized. That's all I'm suggesting. Also, I'd like to know what the update is on the grant status, and we do have a commercial business grant that allows them to bring in twenty grand. I'd like to know where we stand with the spend on that as well as the spend on the residential grant. The commercial grant is for improvements to their business. So that's it. Any update on the limestone pier? Did they get all the debris out of the river?
Nope. I think there's still, I know the last that I heard, they were, because it was a low tide. They were working into the night, actually. But I don't know if they finished. We're going to stand for that.
There's one big piling still there.
There is, okay. Also, we have a, a blight, a slum and blight property list. And what's going on with the property on Quest, on the corner of Blue Point, or, or Old Post and, and Quest? Is that being? I mean, there's, we, we, looks like we've restarted that as well. You had mentioned that we're looking at Stan Tech. You were trying to get a seagrass study kicked off. Did that happen?
That's the Stan Tech thing.
It's pretty Stan Tech, so.
That, that's to do the seagrass study?
Well, it's.
Precursor. Okay, yeah. Perfect, perfect. I didn't hear that in there. And then how do we stand on storm reimbursement? Are we keeping that in sight too?
Yeah, so we're, just to let you know on that, the expedited reimbursement process. That's really, that expedite, by the way, but we've been approved for everything. We were actually supposed to receive fifty percent of our requests, which was, I think somewhere around one point two million. That's where in there. However, they have not expedited that fifty percent. And they're now saying that they're going to expedite the whole thing. So get back in six months. I'll let you know. Thanks. We're, we're pushing on that as well as, you know, all the.
And somebody's been assigned this thing to follow up on it. Adam's got the ball.
Actually, Pam is the frontline person on that one, and Adam is the support on that.
Got you. All right, thanks. That's it. Counselor Hubbard.
When's your last day, Matt?
Uh, well, officially, it's June first, but.
We use much of these until then. We can't, no, we got this interim coming in, so that's only going to give you probably about a week.
If we get somebody that quick.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to wait, I was going to wait to, to say this at the next meeting when you start, you know, wind up the interviews. But I would, I would have concerns if you're, if you have someone that quick in place because, you know, what, what you're also forgetting is we have to do some background checks, and, and that could take a week easily.
Can that be done now with these six people?
I mean, you could start, but it's, it takes time. It's, it costs money too.
Yeah.
And they usually give notice.
Again, best case scenario, we get a week.
And I understand, you know, I'm available. Well, I'll be on.
That's it. Motion adjourned.
The month, the month of June, I'll be on a different time schedule. So anybody would have to call me like in midnight and after, but, but I'm always available, so.
All right, that's good. Good to know. Thank you.
Anything else, Bob? Okay, I've got several things. Just kidding. Looking for motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Me adjourned. Take five minutes and we'll come right back.